I am going to call this meeting to order of the Board of Water Commissioners for the Ware River Water System. It is February 3rd, 2022. The time is 7:01 PM. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording the meeting? Seeing none, I note for the record that members participating, members of the Board of Water Commissioners participating this evening are Liz Klein and Bill Ramsey. First item on our agenda is to consider approval of the minutes of January 18th, 2022. I'm prepared. Bill and Liz?
I'm ready.
Then I will accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of January 18th, 2022.
Second.
A roll call vote. Liz?
I.
Bill?
I.
And Joe?
I.
Next item on our agenda is a joint session with the Ware River Water Systems Citizens Advisory Board, and I see Chrissy Roberts here. I'd ask you to call your meeting to order.
Yep, call the Citizens Advisory Board meeting to order at 7:02 PM on February 3rd.
And could you identify who from your group is participating this evening?
Yep, me, Chrissy Roberts. We've got Stephen Weiss, we've got Stephen Girardi, Sam Mullen, and I believe we're still expecting John Strazieri. I don't see him. And I know Donna Purcell's a member, but she cannot make it this evening.
Right, and so those two are the two members from Hull. Is that correct? Okay. So we will be discussing the fiscal year 23 Ware River Water System budget and proposed rates. And I will call on Russ and Michelle, and I will ask you to allocate between the two of you how you would like to proceed.
This is 100%, Mr. Tierney. Share the presentation for him.
Russell Tierney, you're on.
Good evening all. How's everybody doing tonight?
Doing well.
If we can keep up with this little ice coming tonight, I think everyone's prepared over here at O P W, so ready to go. So FY 23 budget presentation, everybody's been working really hard to put this together. And I want to make sure that we cover everything that you guys need covered. And then after we're all done with this, we'll have a little discussion about rates. So Michelle, you got the wheel. So just another update on, you know, what our mission is and our services. Obviously, they want a treatment plant off of 900 Main Street. For everyone that was unfamiliar with what happened over there this year, we ran a brand new gas line from Main Street all the way to the plant and replaced the aging boiler with two high efficiency gas boilers. The reason why I went with two is because the way it is high efficiency is in the summertime, the boil, only one boiler will run to hot water. But then in the winter time, both boilers will run for heat. Then they actually alternate in the summertime, so not one boiler runs more than the other. So it's a two boiler system and it's very high efficiency. We're actually going to get a couple credits for being highly efficient. The gas line was run by great and they did a great job with it. They were very responsive to our request and got it done in a very timely manner. So I want to thank Steve. I know Steve's on the phone here. He helped us mark out that electric because we did not want to go anywhere into that while we're doing this. We provide billing services, just an update on that. It's going a lot better than it did at the beginning. I think we've ironed out some of the big aches and pains with the customer service. They did bring Sarah Collins on as the newer supervisor a few months ago. She has stepped up and really taken control of that customer service area and has been a huge help for me personally when it comes to reviewing some of these bills that customers are questioning. So I'm doing a really good job. 24 hour customer service, emergency repairs. You can't say any more about the guys that do the emergency repairs up there or the crew that does emergency repairs up there. Whether it's eight degrees or 80 degrees, those people are out there doing their job and they do a great job at it and have been keeping up with everything. Capital improvements, we're moving forward on Atlantic Gav. We should wrap up with that in the next couple of weeks. Then we're going to jump over to Downing Street. But then we're going to go on a little whole pattern with Wamper Tuck because after speaking with JR and Matt, we're going to hold off on Wamper Tuck just for winter reasons. We don't want to do any winter work out of Wamper Tuck, so we'll hold off till April or May to start that back up. Public outreach and education, we do our best with that. When people ask, we give them anything that they need. And conservation, so we're working on conservation measures now again, so it's an ongoing process. Benchmarks and metrics, treating distributor 1.2 billion gallons of water a year, maintain over 190 miles of water main, maintain 10 water sources including Acro Pond. If anyone's seen Acro Pond, we're about starting to flood people's backyards, so we may have to pull in more water out of that pond. We might pull another board out of it, but that's a really good way to start the spring. Fire hydrant inspections, replacing fire hydrants, we did put on hold. I think we had seven in to date because of the lack of fire hydrant availability. I do have 18 of them coming in hopefully in March, which we ordered in August. So that tells you how long it's taking to get fire hydrants. Just so everyone's aware, I have spoken with Cohasset and have spoken with a few other towns and told them that we have enough. And if anyone needs one in an emergency and they can't get one, we'll be more than happy to help them out for the time being because it's just, that's the way things should be between the water departments. G valve inspections are ongoing, cross connection program, capital planning and execution. The leak detection went very well. We had about 10 fire hydrants that were leaking. Out of those 10, eight have been fixed or replaced, eight have been fixed, one has been replaced, and two more, we're waiting on some parts. So we got those leaks under control as quickly as possible. Flushing, we have done flushing very aggressively, but we may postpone it this spring due to the fact that the centrifuge is down and we don't want to have to produce more water that we, you know, to run that one centrifuge. We want to make sure that thing stays up and running till the other one gets repaired. And then media calibrations, we're doing all that work this month. Key initiatives, improve water quality by mentoring programs. So we have been doing some chemical adjustments. We've been watching, you know, the chlorine coming out so that the chlorine is not so high. The treatment staff, you can't say better things about the team that runs that plant. They do a great job and they all take their jobs very seriously. Again, I already talked about the water main replacement program, treatment plan upgrades. We are getting that centrifuge repaired and then we're going to put in the budget in '24, '25 to replace a centrifuge. The GIS and GIP, CIP program, so the GIS program's going great. Lonnie has loaded up all the data from environmental partners into our own GIS program. I know it's part of the contract for Suez to provide their own GIS program, but I thought it was a good time to start putting this information into our own townwide program so we could have a water layer. She got it drafted in there and we're going to start reviewing that. And soon as she moves over here, I think it'll be a lot better anyways because then we can go back and forth right here in the same building. That is, you know, using the GIS system for asset management. So our GIS system, I learned over the past year, has asset management. Randy and DPW uses it for catch basins and manholes and things like that. So Lonnie and I have been talking about getting hydrants loaded up in there. We can start using that for our own asset management. So that, you know, we want redundancy between us and Suez just in case something happens with their system and we need a backup system. So it's very easy to do and we're going to make sure we use our own system for that. The new water storage tank, I can talk about that a little bit more depth later, but right now I'm waiting for a proposal from EP to do some preliminary design, preliminary replacement work on Strawberry Hill. So we're going to start looking at that, but once I get that from them, we'll reconvene and we can go over it and see if we have the money and the Enterprise Fund to start a little bit of work on that so that once we get the warrant articles, hopefully when they pass and we get the money from those, we can start really pushing harder on the tank. But I think there's enough money in the Enterprise Budget to start some of this preliminary work to keep moving on this project. Implementation of the capital study report, I reviewed the entire capital study report. It came out really well. I went over with the T and E Committee last night. They were very happy with the progress on that and they're wrapping up and starting to put together the final product. Just so everyone knows, even though we're putting it together, we have been taking the technical memos and implementing some of the stuff. I did do a summary of that and I will pass it around if we have time, don't have time to discuss it tonight, but I will send it out to everybody so everyone can have a chance to look at it. Again, the hydrogen flushing program and we're going to start doing a few more upgrades. There's one polymer system in the plant that we want to upgrade because it's two floors above the centrifuge. So when the polymer starts to have an issue, the operator has to actually run up two floors, fix the polymer, run back downstairs and do it with the centrifuge. We want to bring it down with the centrifuge where it belongs. So that's one of the things we're going to look at. Good. Salaries and expenses, personnel, one sole water superintendent, one part-time administrative assistant, which is vacant, that will be filled July 1st with another part-time administrative assistant, combined with engineering so that we have one full-time administrative assistant helping us in the engineering department. GS coordinator, we're paying 25% of Lonnie, so we're going to put a 25% across the hall, right? Is that what we're putting there? Going across the hall?
Yep.
One seasonal inspector, which we're still, I'm still going back and forth with. Actually, Randy and I had another conversation about that before he went out and he wants to talk about that with me and maybe look at something combining with him to help us keep more track of our capital work without having to use the engineering companies because we think we could do it better in-house and more efficiently and more effectively in-house. So we're going to discuss that. Contract operations, right now there's three management and oversight staff. The treatment plan and operation maintenance is going to go up by one employee starting July 1st if the budget, when the budget passes. We've had many discussions with Suez and after having this for a year and a half, there's a lot of maintenance work that needs to be done and kept up with between the plants and anything else. The good news is this will eliminate some of the contractor work that we have to do, especially with the mowing of the pump stations and general landscape on the pump stations. This will eliminate us having to use outside contractors. So in preparation for that, we bought a brand new V ride mower for the spring so that the staff can use that instead of push mowers to get the grass cut. So that'll be a really good addition to the staff, plus that pressure will have a T2 license hopefully so they can back up the plant at the same time and the distribution is not changing.
Russ, can I just remind you of something? Sorry, Jody, mind if I jump in?
Please.
So Russ, I just wanted to remind you, the $10,000 line item for support from the DPW, in particular Randy.
I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
That's all right.
Yeah, so we are going to add a line item for DPW support, which would be $10,000. I haven't added that in yet because Tom and I just discussed it last week, so. So basically salaries will be 257, 380. Contract services will be bumped up slightly due to that extra operator, which is to $5,082,605. Our property taxes and insurance, of course, are always going up. Other expenses are staying pretty level from last year and the debt services is staying pretty level from last year. So all in all, the biggest increases on our, on the budget this year will be for contract services to add that second operator, a little bit of property taxes to Hingham Hall and Rockland and Norwell. So those, those three things are actually the increase in the budget that everyone sees from last year. So that's what they are. Any questions?
I will start. Liz, are you ready with any questions for Russell Tierney?
So Russ, thank you. Thank you for putting that report together. Can you just talk a little bit about the capital study report and what's included from that in this budget, if anything?
In this budget, what's included, that is part of last year's budget, too, is Wamper Tuck. And then we had looked at next year for capital work. I can pull up my capital sheet. Doing Sammerset and Hull, but after talking with Hull, I think we're going to put that off because they don't think they're going to have the money to do it anyways. So now I get to look at our, the report, the draft report that just came out from EPG and take some of those streets and actually include them in hopefully in next year's capital work. So some of the road plan stuff is in that, is in that capital work. But again, how they match up, that's what we're working on now with the final report. The final report will dictate how those match up.
Okay, got it, got it. And I see that the contract services are going up this year. Is that a result of, you're saying that the Suez resources that are being added?
We're going to add a Suez resource definitely for the maintenance and maintenance part of the operations, yes.
Okay, great. Glad to see all the GIS stuff coming together. That's, that's great. All right, that's it for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Bill, any questions?
Yeah, Russ, thank you. I was going to ask you about the capital report as well, but Liz beat me to it, so thank you for that question.
I will, I definitely, since we probably won't have time to go with that, but if, I will send it over to you guys. I did a little PowerPoint presentation of updating both of those. So after this meeting, if we don't have time to even look at it, I will send it over to everybody so you can take a look at it.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And, you know, I guess Russ, what's most on my mind is, you know, going forward into the next year, what do you see as, you know, knowing all the capital needs to the plant and how the plant's run, what do you see as the biggest capital need into the next year and maybe into the next two years in terms of expense?
In the next year, I definitely see it as being the, definitely water main work in the tank. Those are the two highest priorities. I did talk with the T and E Committee last night. We're going to look at putting a little bit of money aside in '24 for some painting at the plant, but we really want to look at how, how our reserve fund comes in this year and, you know, over the next two years and look at that and use that for painting instead of the capital money. But there are some parts of the plant that desperately need paint, so we are definitely looking deeper into that for FY '24. But next year, definitely in '23, it'll be a little more water main work, but really focused on the tank because we got to get Turkey Hill offline and get it rehabilitated.
Great, Russ. And also unrelated to your report, also want to thank you for your recent efforts to assist those residents up on Rockland Street who needed some water assistance. I know you went above and beyond this week in helping them out and thank you for doing that. So appreciate your efforts there. Thank you.
From an all.
So Russ, I just want to get back to capital as well. Looking at the annual report that Sue has prepared, that was for, I guess, for the year for 2021, it's showing projected capital improvements for fiscal year '21, '22 of 5.4 million. Is that still a good number or has that number changed?
We're still on budget for that number, so it was 2.7 in '21 and 2.7 in '22 and we're right on the number right now. Even with a couple little hiccups that we had with the filters, the other filters and
Right.
some other thing in the repair to the centrifuge with some of the savings that we incurred with a couple of the jobs, it actually paid for the centrifuge repairs. So we are doing very well with that and I actually, Sue promised me another meeting in about two more weeks to narrow that down a little more because she has it, she's trying to put it into the budgets and everything to get all that stuff caught up to where we need to be with it.
I will turn this to Chrissy Roberts and have you see if any folks on the advisory board have comments or questions for us.
Thank you, Joe. I'll start with Stephen Weiss. I know you have to go, right, and not too, too long. So do you have any questions while you're here?
I don't. I just want to compliment Russ on the amazing job that he and the crew keep doing, so thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
Stephen Girardi?
Actually, I have no questions. They're doing a great job and all the folks down there are amazing, so give up the good work.
Sam Mullen?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just had to unmute. No, I have no questions on the basis of everything I've heard. It sounds like things are really going as planned.
John Strazieri?
Hi, everyone. I've been in frequent contact with Russ coordinating needs in Hull. I guess the one item that I haven't heard anything is about the master plan. I've heard some prior things that we're going to be hearing an update on that. Where do we stand on it and when do we expect to see it?
So they're finalized, putting it all together now, John. So all the pieces have been reviewed. So they did a bunch of technical memos, which I've been reviewing all along. And some of the stuff in those technical memos have already been implemented. So I think you might have came in a few minutes later. I do have an update on that. If we don't have time this meeting, because I know we have to go to a selectmen's meeting, I will email it to everybody that's here tonight and you guys can all look at it and just keep it as, it's a draft. So everyone just take a look at it and see, I did a quick summary of it. So the summary would let you know where we stand with it and how it's going to go going forward. So we are shooting for the end of April, the end of April to have it all done, bound into everybody, so.
Okay, and then as for me, thank you. Lots of great information and I think everything's been going really well. These slides will be available for the public?
So?
No.
They will be posted on the website, won't they, Michelle?
Yeah, we can do that.
We usually get questions about that, just, you know, looking for if anything's going to be put out there. Obviously, everything we're talking about, any warrant articles, dollar amounts, all within the Enterprise Fund, correct?
Correct.
And did you say where? There's an, it's an additional tank?
Well, yeah, so one of those parts of the study was to evaluate our storage capacity and our fire flow capacity and taking the reports from both fire departments to look at any deficiencies in the fire flows throughout the towns. So the number one priority in the master plan is to construct a new storage tank. Right now, the recommendation is going to be Strawberry Hill. That's going to be the recommendation. It's the best place and it's suited for it and that's where we are saying we want to put it. So we're in the very preliminary stages of it, but that is exactly what we're going to do. That's the number one priority.
So no kind of ETA?
Yes, I'm hoping for the end of FY '24, so that's our hope to have it up and running.
Okay.
But we all know I hope high. We will push, we'll get there.
Well, you're getting a lot done.
Yes.
So thank you. That's it for me.
So Russ, where are we on rates?
We're in a good position with rates and Michelle, I didn't get a chance to send you this, so you might have to give me the screen. Sorry.
You should be able to share. Go ahead.
So I have a little bit of a table that was put together by Matt Abrahams. He shared it with the T and E Committee last night. He will have a written draft, a written report to me by Monday and hopefully we can all go through that and get that out before the, you know, like the middle of the month and no later than the end of the month. So what Matt did, he did it in two phases. He looked at it with the 10% increase that was actually in the 10-year plan. Joe and everybody first looked at the system and he actually did it without it. So he wanted to show everybody how even without it, without that 10% increase in FY '25, the water system still performs very well. With that 10% increase, you know, the surplus is a million five, a million six. Everyone can see this, right? Up to 27. And that coverage ratio stays very well above like 1.2, 1.1, 1.25. If we don't have a rate change in '25, the surplus does go down a little bit. But if you look at the retained earnings, it stays at a healthy 3.5 after FY '27, which is about 24%. We've had a lot of discussions about it and in his final report, he's holding the retained earnings to about 17 and a half. That's the number that we talked to a few of the enterprise funds. We got some other information from other towns. Where they all stand is between 15 and 20. So we kind of picked the middle after talking to everybody and getting that range of 15 to 20. And we stayed with the 17 and a half because I think the system does need that little extra money to do some extra work. But again, without a rate increase in '25, we do start to lose some of that retained earnings. So that's where we'll start to really discuss, you know, after this year, you know, what do we, do we need a little bit of rate increase here and there? The spreadsheet that Matt put together was very well done and you can actually add in percent increases and it shows exactly what's going to happen. So he is doing a really nice job with it and like I said, we should have some more concrete information from him in the middle of the month. But all in all, over the next five years, the five-year outlook for '23, '24, '25, '26, '27 looks very good for the system. We do dip under the debt coverage ratio, coverage ratio in FY '26 under one, but Jim Taylor was pretty confident that we'd be past the promise that we made to everybody, you know, to make sure that we kept that for the first three years. So with that said, we are all recommending no increase this year.
So no increase for fiscal year '23?
Correct.
And this is, I guess, a question for Michelle. Does the debt cover ratio have an impact on our bond rating?
On our bond rating?
Yes, on Hingham's AAA bond rating. Because I think ultimately, I think we are looking to have this stand on its own.
Right, so these were general, or we acquired the system through general obligation bonds and the rating agencies are looking to see three years of self-supporting operations here. But the borrowing itself was excluded from our debt limit, but yes, it is a factor with the rating agencies.
Okay, so that's something we will be covering.
So that's why, that's why we had to stay above the one. The one was the magic number. We had to stay above one. So we are doing, with this outlook, we are doing that all the way through FY '25.
Liz, did you have any follow-up?
No, this looks great, Russ, and I know people are anxious to hear this, so I appreciate you putting this together and it's helpful to see it in the five years. And, you know, I think as we see the master plan and the capital study report, we can make better decisions about when we, when we need to invest more in the system and how that affects rates. But this looks great. Thank you.
Bill?
This is very helpful. This looks great and I think things are progressing well. So thanks, Russ.
Yes, and Chrissy, anyone else from your group have any questions they'd like to raise?
Let's see, I'm seeing who's, I can't, I think Stephen Weiss dropped. Johnny, you raising your hand?
Yes.
Go ahead.
This looks, this is great. The one item, I guess, behind the, these numbers would be the water usage. And Russ, what is the projected usage and how do we stand relative to unaccounted for water? And do we feel comfortable with the metered water usage that we're charging to each of the, that they're part of each town's residents' rate, usage rate? So, you know, how does all that play into that? Because I know in looking at the source side, you know, usage becomes a big factor in these numbers. And so just like to see how you deal with that here.
So with the 10% increase last year, Joe, John, we're still tracking on budget for the year, even with the less usage of water in the wet spring, wet summer. So the 10% increase really helped us this year, kept us above water, I should say. Matt did do a quick calculation on that. If we did not have the 10% increase, we'd be about $900,000 behind on revenue with the water usage we have right now. But because of the 10% increase, we're only about $250,000 behind on revenue right now, right this minute. So that did help a lot and again, the usage, you know, was historically low this year because I was actually comparing, we built a spreadsheet comparing the averages over the past 10 years and we were quite significantly lower than in past. But it also attributed to we're doing a better job with unaccounted for water, so it's a twofold thing, so. And just remember, if we get the unaccounted for water under control, we can sell more water to the sprinklers.
Yes. So.
Sam Mullen, any questions?
Yeah, and what is the current unaccounted for water?
23%. Well, for last year's complete year. This year, I'm still working on the final number, so I will be ready to share that in a few weeks.
That seems up quite a bit, Russ, from what it had been.
What it had been was a little off. We had that discussion last night in our, in our meeting with the transition committee. The numbers that were shared previously were the calculated numbers, not the DEP approved numbers. The DEP approved numbers were higher. So what happens is when you do unaccounted for water in your annual staffs report, the DEP then reviews your unaccounted for water and says, yes, you can use that for conservatively estimated, no, you can't. Then they send you a revised unaccounted for water number and that's what we use, the revised one, the one that DEP sent back.
I see. Okay.
Sam, you good?
Yes, I'm.
Stephen Girardi, anything else?
No, I think it looks good. I'd say you have a good, strong retained earnings right through '26, so it looks pretty good.
And as for me, so if I'm looking at this correctly, it's the town, including an increase in '25 versus the Abraham study?
Yeah, the town's original projections include the 25, the 10% in '25. The Abraham's group projections does not. We specifically, we did that on purpose because we wanted to see how it looked without it.
Yep. And no increase for this year and nothing's written in stone. And no increase for this year, and nothing's written in stone, obviously, but it would seem as though probably not next year either, but probably twenty five.
I reserve the right to hold my opinion on that, we'll go through the next year because, again, a lot of stuff has been happening, a lot of things have been coming around and scaring scaring us every once in a while, giving us a quick, you know, skip of the heart, but we've addressed it all, and we keep running strong, so. Two to us, everybody that's helping out, it's doing well.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the questions we get, and, you know, rates are always right up there.
Correct.
John, you holding your hand?
Yeah, just one other item, what we're finding relative to our capital program is costs are increasing. Material shortages, labor shortages, contractors, contractors are busy. It's tough to get a lot of competitive bidders right now, and we're just starting our big capital program at our sewer plant, so. I just know that that's, how is that factored in, Russ, relative to what type of contingency do we have in the numbers that you're projecting?
I've changed all the numbers for estimating replacement of water mains for FY twenty three, I've increased them all so that instead of doing six projects, probably only gonna be able to do five. But that's the reality of it all, but again, I did build a spreadsheet with all the recommendations from environmental partners in the capital study. Spread it out over the five years, ten years, fifteen and twenty to see how it looked numbers wise, so that's something I can absolutely share with everybody. But I took that all into consideration, up the cost of each size pipe and how it goes in, so definitely taking that into account.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Great. I am mindful that we do need to bring this to a close because we have a select board meeting scheduled for seven thirty. But we next on our agenda is the Water Superintendent updates, are there? Russ, you have any updates that you have not yet covered that you'd like to cover?
I think I've given it to you all, I talked, I talked through it, so, yeah, definitely.
So then, the final item on our agenda would be public comments on items not on the agenda for the Ware River System Board of Water Commissioners. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn the Board of Water Commissioners meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, hi, so this meeting is adjourning, and we will start in one minute, the board, the select board meeting, thank you all.
Joe, can I adjourn our meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please.
Motion to adjourn the board, the Citizens Advisory Board meeting.
So moved.
Great, I have a second.
Second.
All right, roll call, John?
I approve.
Stephen?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
And I'm an I, thank you very much, and we will have another meeting on, what do we say, Monday, right? Monday, four P M, if anybody wants to join our meeting then and hear superintendent's report right from Russ, thank you.
Great.
Good to see you all. Thank you all.
Hi.
Thanks, Russ.
So Michelle, I will ask the obvious, just making sure that the link and address information for the select board meeting was the same as what it was for the Water Commissioners.
Yes, it is.
Great. Okay, then it's seven thirty five, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board for February third, twenty twenty two. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty one, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording this evening? I see none, I will note for the record that members of the select board participating this evening are Liz Klein and Bill Ramsey. First item on our agenda is to consider approval of minutes, and you'll bear with me one second. Looking for. Here we go. Okay, it is the minutes of January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. I am prepared to proceed, Liz?
I'm prepared to proceed.
And Bill?
Good to go.
Okay, I will accept a motion on the January twenty fifth meeting. A minute, so I'm sorry.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes dated January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe, I approved. Next item on our agenda.
Joe.
Yes, sir.
Joe, one thing, I just noticing, it's great to see so many attendees, but noticing some of the names on in the Zoom, I think some some members of the public might be here for some items that may have fallen off our agenda tonight.
Good point.
Do you want to just mention what items have fallen off, so folks don't aren't disappointed they were falling off and wait?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, so, so there is an item on our agenda concerning the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant. The issue was Article C C to consider transfer of care custody control of a portion of the transfer station site. We will not be taking that up this evening, so if there are members of the public here for that discussion, I hate to disappoint you, but that will be deferred to a future meeting of this board, and it will certainly be noticed. So folks will have an opportunity to participate.
Thank you.
Tom, are there any other items that you're aware of that we need to bring to the public's attention?
Nope, that's great, thank you, Joe.
Right, yeah, and Bill, I appreciate your your raising that. Excellent point. Next item on our agenda then is to consider disposition of parcels shown as portion A and portion B of nineteen twenty nine Old Derby Street Layout Number twenty six oh four, as shown on a plan entitled Old Derby Street Partial Discontinuance Plan dated January sixteen, twenty twenty, prepared by C H A Companies as authorized pursuant to Article thirty seven of the Town of Meeting, twenty twenty Annual Town Meeting. So again, we're considering disposition of parcels A and B, and I believe we have on the line our real estate counsel, Susan Murphy. Hello, would you please walk us through what is being proposed?
Sure, and I have a image that I can put on the screen if you would like me to.
I think that would be very helpful, yes.
Okay. I will share just a minute.
I do hear dogs, and they are not allowed to vote.
And that's behind a closed door, so I apologize for that. Can everyone see the plan that is up on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, this is not, this is not the plan that was recorded that you referenced in your introduction, but it is a much more helpful plan for the purposes of illustration to anyone who may be watching. In connection with the all of the work that was done in the Derby Street corridor over the last five years or so, one of the improvements that were made was that Old Derby Street was realigned originally, Old Derby Street came out approximately in this location. And then, but the other portion of Old Derby Street came out here. So there was no direct link. And this goes back to many, many decades ago, when Old Derby Street was replaced, the original Derby Street was replaced by the state with Derby Street. In order to improve safety on these roadways, DOT, Department of Transportation for the state, agreed to line up Old Derby Street, there's now a traffic signal to create safety. So this portion in the light blue teal color is now the new portion of Old Derby Street. And this portion that used to come out here has been discontinued. As a result, the town which owned this strip of Old Derby Street was left with these two orange pork parcels known as portion A here and portion B here, as we'll just call them orphan parcels. They don't have any practical use to the town for any purpose. The owners of these respective parcels were interested in acquiring portion A and portion B. Disposition of land is subject to Mass General Law's Chapter thirty B. So we had the town first needed to determine the value. The value can be done by a formal appraisal, or it can be done by usual practices of the town's assessor's office, given that the parcels are very small and of no independent use, they couldn't be purchased by someone and then used for any independent purpose. That going the assessors valuation route was the most reasonable and rational way to approach it. So prior to the twenty twenty town meeting, that exercise was done. And the the values of these two parcels were determined, and then a town meeting warrant article voted both to discontinue these portions as part of Old Derby Street and to authorize the select board to dispose of the parcels on terms and conditions reasonably acceptable to the board. So these owners came forward and offered to pay the values as determined by the assessors. This is something that has been, you know, kind of waiting in the wings since the twenty twenty town meeting to get completed. And we have now prepared the necessary agreement, which has been provided to the board for each of these parcels. And that is what is before the board tonight.
So am I correct that both of these orphan parcels, neither one constitutes a buildable lot?
That's correct.
And am I correct that if we proceed with the sale, the town would receive the proceeds of the sale? And each year thereafter, the value of those parcels would be added to the assessed value, which ultimately would lead to increased real estate taxes collected with respect to these parcels?
That is correct.
Okay. Liz, any questions?
This is really helpful to see the visual, Susan, thank you. No, I think, Joe, you you covered everything, this this sounds good, thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
So it's two, it's two different buyers for the two parcels, is that right, Susan?
Yeah, so portion A is going to be would be would be if approved by the board, would be acquired by the owner of the best Chevrolet best Chevrolet parcel.
Yeah.
And W S Development, which owns Derby Street Shops, would be acquiring this portion B.
Okay, I was curious about B, just because the the vote list says Old Derby Parcel Owner LLC, so, great.
Yeah, they chose to just create a separate entity for the time being to acquire this parcel.
Makes sense, thank you, Susan, appreciate it.
So this is just one follow up question, what uses will be permitted on these parcels once they are sold?
It will, it would be uses that would be permitted under the zoning bylaw for the adjacent parcels.
Am I correct that there's a a special permit that applies to the Derby Street project? And so would these parcels be brought within that special permit?
Well, for the time being, they they are, they have no for the Derby Street, they don't have any planned uses for it. My understanding is that this parcel back here may currently be used in connection with their septic system that serves Derby Street Shops, but they're not planning on making any improvements or modifications at this time to this parcel. If they were, they would have to incorporate it in because any of the uses out here would require a special permit. I understand that the buyer of this parcel is going to come in with a consolidation plan that would consolidate the boundaries of all the land they own, including this parcel, and to make it one lot. They may wish to come in and modify their permits in the future just to reconfigure their their parking areas for the car dealership.
Would the would the lots be merged, because ones are nonconforming and it could be in common ownership?
Right, these these would merge for zoning purposes, that is a matter of law. They just wanted to create a cohesive lot was there, was what their council.
Okay, makes sense. If we could end the screen sharing so that I'll be able to see if any member of the public has comments or questions, thank you, so. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions on this action item? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept a motion.
All right, kind of a long one, so bear with me here, all right. I'd make a motion that the board pursuant to Article thirty seven of the Town of Hingham, twenty twenty Annual Town Meeting disposes of the parcels known as portion A and portion B, as shown on certain plan entitled Old Derby Street Partial Discontinuance Plan dated one sixteen, twenty twenty, authorize the town administrator to enter into the following purchase and sale agreements and authorize a chair of the board to execute all documents and take such actions as are necessary and proper to effectuate the disposition of such parcels. One, purchase and sale agreement with Showman Realty LLC for portion A for consideration of twenty eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Two, purchase and sale agreement with Old Derby Parcel Owner LLC for portion B for consideration of seventeen thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe, I approve, and Susan, thank you for really a thorough presentation.
Thank you, good night, thank you.
Now we move on on our agenda for the twenty twenty two Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article Discussions. We have a number of articles, and again, if anyone has joined us late, the article concerning Hingham Municipal Light Plant has been deferred and will be deferred to a future meeting, so if you are here for that article, you will be disappointed. First, we're gonna take up Article V, which is for the Ware River Water System Capital Projects, and I believe we still have Russell Tierney with us.
Yeah.
Yes.
So. Joe, I think the title of this one is slightly off, I just want to clarify that Article V is for the appropriation of the bond premium.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's on.
Still related to capital projects, but it's, I think the title was just a little bit off on the agenda.
So right, so I'm sorry, right, Article V is appropriation of the bond premium and excess bond proceeds. So Michelle, do you want to start with this?
Sure, I'll start off and I'll hand it over to Russell, thank you. So Article V, this is, like we said, to appropriate a seven million dollar bond premium from that resulted from the acquisition of the water system when we did the initial borrowing for that, as well as one hundred and twelve thousand, seventy four dollars in excess bond proceeds from the same sale. Um, so the purpose of, we need a town meeting vote to appropriate this money and. Russell will use it in the water system for three main purposes. The first is to design and construct a new water tank. The second is to rehabilitate the water tank um, on Turkey Hill. And the third is for other capital improvements throughout the Ware River Water System. I don't know if Russell wants to add additional details about the proposed uses of these funds. And, and just note, this is not, this is already money that the town has borrowed. This is not. Increasing rates, this is not affecting the FY twenty-three water budget. This is already. Um, built into the twenty-three and beyond capital plan for the water system.
So i- if I can just restate that, are you saying that? These are funds that have already been provided for and we're just um, re- reallocating their use?
Yes, so when we, when we did the initial borrowing for the system, that's when we received these, these funds. And we are now appropriating them so we can spend them on capital projects.
And they were appropriated for the Ware Ri- River System, and you are going to continue to use them for that purpose?
That's right.
Great. Russ, did you want to discuss however briefly you can? Uh, the, the three projects that the funds would be used for?
Yep, so the main, the, the main portion of the funds will be used to construct a new water storage tank as discussed in our previous meeting. Um, hopefully, uh, where we decided on Strawberry Hill. And the second part of it will be to, once that tank is up and running, we will take Turkey Hill Tank offline. And give that much-needed uh, rehabilitation work. Uh, we've been piecing that together with a few patches here and there, but that tank definitely needs to be taken offline and completely rehabilitated. Um, any remaining funds will go into other assets that. Will assist in the new storage tank, Turkey Hill, and um, Aging Hall Booster Station to make sure that all those three pieces. Once we get them all back up and running together, they work some, you know, together as one. Um, so that's what basically that, that money will be useful.
Great. Um. So, Tom, just so I am clear on the procedure here, the vote for. Um. That's before us this evening is the appropriation of those funds. And the vote concerning the use of those funds would actually be taken. By the Board of Water Commissioners. Is that, is that fair?
That, that is fair, Joe.
Okay, great. Um.
Michelle, unless you think I'm wrong on that, Michelle, but I think that's exactly what we should do.
I think, um, because it's an article, it's still the board recommending favorable action or not.
Yes.
And then the recommended motion would detail, what Joe was saying, would detail the amounts and how they would be used when the advisory committee takes it up.
Okay, great. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
And Bill.
I, no questions. Michelle kind of walked me through this um, couple of weeks ago, so I'm tracking with it and how the process works. So, comfortable with it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm with you, Bill, as well. Uh, are there any members of the public with questions on Article V? I am seeing none, uh, so I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article V.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye, approved. I, I must say, it's unfair, Liz, that you, your vote. Your motion was literally like six words and Bill had to do a much longer one. I'm not sure how you arranged that trade-off.
I would say after Tuesday night, she deserves a break. So, um, happy to take the longer motions this evening.
Okay, uh, we will then move on to Article W. Which is for the Ware River Water System Capital Projects. And again, Michelle and uh, Russ, if you can lead us through that discussion.
Sure, so this article for capital projects is. An authorization to borrow. So whereas the first one was appropriating funds we had already borrowed. This one is an authorization for the Ware River Water System to borrow um, two point seven million. And um, for FY twenty-two and two point seven million for FY twenty-three to allow Russell to keep moving forward with the capital projects. That he has planned for. Um, these are built into the Ware River Water System budget. For FY twenty-two and twenty-three, um, so it shouldn't affect it. Again, this won't increase rates for twenty-three. It's already built into the plan.
And, and this does not affect the Town of Hingham budget with respect to. Funds coming in or going out. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is not affecting property taxes. It is all through the Water System Enterprise Fund. And this represents the annual capital amount that the town um, made a, made a commitment to. Doing the annual investment in water mains and other pieces of infrastructure in the system. And I know Russell has detailed plans, um, and can speak more about what the funds will be used for.
Uh, again, I'm not sure that we need to go into that depth of discussion for this article. Um, because uh, the, it, it is consistent with, with the capital plan that's been outlined and that have been reviewed by the Board of Water Commissioners. Um, Liz, any questions?
So I am, I'm familiar with this and I understand it's the two point seven million for FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three. Should those amounts be in the article, though?
They don't need to be in the article itself, but they will be described in the comment and certainly will be included in the recommended motion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Bill.
I'm comfortable with it. It's lying, it's, you know, it's in the plan. It doesn't impact rates, so. Okay, but.
Yep, and, and that is exactly what we've heard. Uh, Russ, am I correct?
We're correct. Yep, it's already in there. Yep.
Yes. Are there members of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article W.
Second.
A roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye, approved. We now move to, I believe it is Article U. Uh, which is uh, to consider rescinding authorization, au- authorized but unissued debt. And uh, Michelle, are you going to walk us through that one as well?
Actually, our treasure collector, Jean.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Jean is here.
Yeah, I'll start. I didn't know if Michelle wanted to kick it off. Um, this article, and I will read it so that everybody knows what we're talking about. That the town vote to rescind the net amount of authorized but unissued debt for certain town capital projects. Including engineering, design, studies and or construction. Which are no longer needed for the purposes for which they were initially approved. Or act on anything related thereto. So this is, you know, basically where we are rescinding, the short version, we're asking the town meeting to rescind some. Previously authorized and unissued debt from projects that. Are completed in older, they're back uh, from two thousand eleven and before that. So this is pretty much a housekeeping article. You know, why do we have to do this? You know, rescinding um, authorized but unissued debt is really. Um, consistent with good accounting practices. We do this periodically, although we haven't done it in a while. And it, basically, these amounts are no longer necessary um, to have out there on our unauthorized and. Unissued debt. So we have, I don't know how much detail you want me to go in on this, the, the total amount. That we're asking to have rescinded from a group of ten different articles from. I think it's, the earliest was nineteen ninety-eight through two thousand eleven. Is six million four hundred and nine thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars. This, there's no cost to this. This have, are basically, there are three reasons why we're. We have these funds still remaining on the books. Um, I do have a, a memo. I don't know if Michelle has it and wants to put it up, or can I put that chart up that at least shows those projects? So I'm not just babbling on.
Be- before we go on, I guess, so that we understand why this came up. And my understanding is that either the project came in under budget so that the funds were not needed. Or that there were other funds available, and so the debt did not have to be issued. Are, are those the two reasons why this would come up?
Yes. So of, of the ten projects that we have, eight of them were basically came in under budget. So the funds, we had borrowed uh, what we needed and. Had some amounts left in the authorization, and so that now has to be rescinded um, by town meeting.
So I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable proceeding without going through each of them, because I think we understand conceptually. Why this came about up and why it's a good thing that we are now rescinding. Debt that was not issued and that we no longer need.
Um, good to me.
So, um, un- unless my fellow uh, select board members have a differing opinion, I will start with Liz.
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with this. Thank you.
Yes, and Bill.
I'm comfortable as well. Thanks for the explanation, Jean.
Are there members of the public with questions on this? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. On Article U.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article U.
Second.
A roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye, approved. We move to Article O. Which is to consider modifying the size of the Long Range Waste and Recycling Committee. And um. Is Maria here?
Yes, I am.
Here you are. Um, so if you can explain what you're doing and why you're doing it. And I will ask you to tread carefully because this was the first committee that I served on when I moved to town. So, I, I am hopeful that whatever you're doing will be in the best interest of that.
Yeah, I think it will be. So this came out of a conversation with the town moderator. Um, we currently, um, our charter asks for nine members. Um, we're currently at five. We started at four and I called the town moderator and he got us one more, so we got us up to five. Um, and that makes us one of the largest committees in town. Um, so in the past, when I've been on the committee, when we have nine members, there are always varying degrees of engagement. And it poses some issues to um, getting quorum. Um, and scheduling meetings. So we feel that we're at seven members. Um, we can absolutely carry out our mission, um, and perhaps even a little bit more efficiently. And then the idea of extending the terms from two to three years um, would put us in line with other town committees, most of. Um, which have three-year terms. So it, um, there's less churn in the committee. Um, and also, um, it's less of an effort to constantly be reappointing or seeking out members.
So, um. Could you, I, I just, first, I, from what I understand, if we proceed with this uh, recommendation. We will not be removing anyone who's currently sitting on the committee because there are vacancies. Is that?
No, we would not.
And would you explain how terms would be staggered? When, once the terms are extended from two to three years?
So we'd just be adding a year on to everyone's, um, the current members' terms. So those who came onto the committee in twenty twenty, that's. The furthest back, um, instead of coming off the committee in twenty twenty-two, would come off the committee in twenty twenty-three. Those who came on twenty twenty-one would come off in twenty twenty-four. Um, and I ran that by the members of the committee and no one objected.
So, um. Ones, i- if, if we were to proceed, uh, so it would then be seven members. How many would be leaving in any one year? So, so the first time someone departs. Uh, I, I just want to make sure that we're not resulting in everyone leaving at the same time. And then, then there's no stagger of terms, no continuity of membership.
No, I don't think that would be the case with the current members. There's one who came on in twenty twenty-two, who came on. One who came on in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-one. Um. And, no, it's, it would be no more than two people, um, leaving the committee at any one time.
That's great. Thank you. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Um, I think that, that rationale makes a lot of sense. Um, we certainly appreciate all that the committee does and, and lended a lot of support to the task, the Sustainable Budget Task Force. So thank you.
Bill.
Uh, uh, no questions. It's a great committee and get more people involved. Uh, sounds great to me.
Are there any members of the public with questions on this article? If seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion on Article O.
I make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article O.
Second.
A roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye, approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and I haven't mentioned this before, the reason we do, we are doing roll call votes is that. Under the open meeting law, when we are participating remotely. Uh, that's the procedure we need to follow, which is a roll call vote, which we not, would not be doing if we were in person. Um, next, we move to Article P, which is the uh. South Shore Country Club Maintenance Facility Authorization to Borrow Additional Funds. I see uh, Kevin Whalen and Christine Smith. Uh, Tom, do you want to introduce this first, or we can proceed just with Kevin?
We'll just hand it right over to Mr. Whalen.
Great.
Thanks, thanks, Joe. Um, Christine was going to say a few words to start off.
Please, Christine.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for, for having us. Christine Smith, Chairman of the South Shore Country Club Management Committee. Uh, proud to have our two warrant articles before you, one for the maintenance facility and one for the uh, the town pool. And I am joined by Kevin Whalen, uh, Executive Director of the Country Club. I think I saw Mark Thorell on the line, who will be uh, involved uh, with Hingham Rec, as they've always run the pool operations for us. We've got Chris Roddy uh, from RMD Collaborative, who is our architect. And he's joined by Taylor McDonald, our operating project manager from um, Palmerine Associates. So we've been a great team. We've put a lot of work into this and we're excited to uh, to present uh, all of our hard work. Kevin.
Kevin.
Thank you, everyone. I want to thank the select board for consideration of the both articles that we're putting uh, before you tonight. Uh, we do have a PowerPoint presentation um, that we can put up. The South Shore Country Club Maintenance Building, we had an annual town meeting vote in twenty twenty that authorized two point two million dollars. To uh, build um, a maintenance building. Obviously, we're building the maintenance building due to the failure of the current uh, maintenance. Building. Um, so when we put out the two point two number, um, that was um, a hopeful number. We wanted to also build out to the future. So what we're going to need as far as the building to replace the um, staff building. That is on the site as well. So we hired Palmerine, uh, Palmerine Associates. In um, November of twenty twenty, and then we also hired um, RMD in twenty twenty-one. I mean, in twenty, December of twenty twenty. So we, what we are coming before you tonight is to request an additional eight hundred and fifteen thousand of bond capacity to complete Phase One. Which will be a seven thousand square foot maintenance garage and equipment storage building. The South Shore Country Club operates as an enterprise fund. The debt service will be repaid through Gulf revenues. The, currently, the project is kind of midway. The site work is substantially complete. The maintenance building, you know, is designed with net zero principles. Now, one of the reasons why we did this a little bit different, we didn't hire a um, a project manager. Prior to going to town meeting to request the funds was due to the emergency nature of the um, the, the. In the current state of the building where our maintenance building is currently. So we wanted to get going as quickly as possible to save time. So if we go to the next side, slide please. This is a view from South Street on the top, looking south from South Street. And then that's what the maintenance building would look like. And if you go there today, you'll see that the site work is, is been done for this building and it will be kind of placed on the uh, little crest that was created by the contractor. And then the side view there is looking west. Um, when you're up towards the ninth hole, you'll be looking uh, west towards that. That's the, what you'll see uh, on the building. You can go to the next slide. So I just want to show everyone that we are, you know. Financially stable to be able to handle the additional debt service that this uh, requests will uh, incur. We have current fund balance of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand. We will add to the current fund balance in this fiscal year. Anticipated revenues for twenty twenty-two is going to be two point one million. Uh, the annual debt service that this will create is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over twenty years. And the only other outstanding debt that we currently have is three hundred and twenty thousand for a uh, equipment line item that we purchased three years ago. And the work that remains to be done on the building is essentially is the foundation we put in and obviously in build the building itself. Um, so that's kind of the, you know, what we have left to do with this project, and then they'll come back and complete the uh, you know, some of the other items for the site work. So the timeline would be that the maintenance building construction will be put out to bid in March, so we'll go out mid-March. And we'd word the contract immediately follow the town, annual town meeting. The construction start date would be late May, early June, and then hopefully we'd have a completion of the building by the end of twenty twenty-two. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions?
I'll start with Liz.
Thank you, Kevin. This is great, and you've done a great job managing operations and all the capital projects there. So thank you. Um, just a question about timing, just knowing that it's hard to get contractors right now and, and supplies. Just a question about timing, just knowing that it's hard to get contractors right now and supplies. And so how confident are you in this timeline?
I think, you know, one of the things that we did do by splitting out the, the contracts, if remember, we did that last spring to get the work out so we can kind of keep the project moving. So what that does is actually it's makes the project a little bit smaller and that will, we're hoping that that would enlarge the pool of contractors that would be able to, in fact, take, go, take the job and do it. So we're hoping that that would have expanded the pool of candidates to perform the work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Bill, any questions?
Just a couple of questions. Yeah, Kevin, I'm assuming you already, you knew you got all your special permits, zoning planning and, and did you have to go through the Historic District Commission?
Yes, we did. We went through the Historic Commission. We went through CONCOM and the Planning Board as well. So we went through all the different boards that we had to and that was actually prior to starting the site work we did that, Bill.
Great. That's fantastic. So that way your design won't change.
No.
Going forward.
No. And the other thing too, which I, you know, we, you know, when we were doing the, you know, obviously we're kind of doing a master plan for the whole facility. And this is kind of on the west side. So we're really, you know, we spent money on design. So we do have the building plans for that second phase of this construction project, which I don't know when that will happen, but that will replace the old greenhouse that is down back there. That is where our staff is.
Okay. And, you know, just, you don't need to go into too much detail, but you mentioned net, net zero principles. Can you give us some highlights?
Yeah, sure. First of all, it's, it's constructed, it'll be constructed in a way that it will be able to support a large solar array on that very large roof. And secondly, we're going with all electric heat. So, you know, those are the principles that we've embraced and we've tried to, you know, support the net zero initiative.
Great. Thanks, Kevin.
Kevin, if I can just follow up on the question that Liz asked, she noted that it's hard to get contractors. That might affect the timing. It's also resulted in higher costs. And I'm wondering if you've built in to your figures where you think costs will be?
Yeah, we, when we did the estimate back in, like, I think it was like last April, March or April, you know, lumber and things like that were at a, at an all-time high. And I think, you know, we, that's one of the reasons why we split, hoping that the market would stabilize a little bit. You know, I think it has a little bit, but not as much as we would probably have hoped. But I think we're confident with the contingency and escalation that we've put into the, the 815 that we should be comfortable and we'll have that number before town meeting. Also, Taylor McDonald is on the line and he can kind of speak to the, you know, to the, to the budgeting of, or the estimating of the, of the job and the price that we're giving you at the 815,000.
Is he prepared to just give us?
Yeah.
If he has right now, that'd be great. I don't see him, but.
Okay.
I'm here now. I couldn't unmute myself. Yeah, so we, we did, we did build that in before, back in May, when we performed that first estimate. Our, our estimate for the, just the building itself was about 1, 1,500,000. Since talking to the estimator now, about, you know, 10 months later, they told us to add about six and a half percent to that number. And then also carry about two and a half percent of design and pricing contingency. So that's built into this. So we've, we've added the escalation that we would have experienced if we bid this out, you know, 10 months later to the number. And then put in, like I said, two and a half percent of a design and pricing contingency to the number. So we are, we are, you know, have that increases, you know, built into our, our budget here. So we feel, we feel pretty comfortable with it.
Great. You're, you're ahead of the game. Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I was going to say the other thing too is we still have a million dollars left over from the 2.2 and this would just augment that, those funds to, you know, to complete the job.
Yes. One final question. What is your projected useful life of the building?
I would, I would imagine 50 years would probably be a, you know, a good estimate. I don't know if Taylor and Chris, the designer, could weigh in on that even more specifically, but I would say that, you know, it'd be 50 years. I think, you know, this, the building that we're in now was about 70 years old and I would probably that we would have, you know, a good long life for the, for the maintenance building.
Yeah. Sorry, Taylor. I, I would agree with Kevin. I mean, it's, it's a very, it's a very simple structure. The, you know, exterior envelope is a little bit more robust than you would normally might see for a maintenance building. You know, there'll certainly be the yearly or bi-yearly maintenance. You know, it's, it's a shingle roof that'll have to be replaced at a certain point, but nothing that you wouldn't expect in order to, you know, maintain a building like that.
Great. Thank you. Are there any members of the public with questions on Article P? I am seeing none. I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article P.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe?
I. Approved. We move to Article Q, which concerns South Shore Country Club Pool Authorization to Borrow. And again, Christine, did you want to start?
Um, sure. So this is, just to be clear, this is, it's the town of Hingham's Town Pool that happens to be located at the South Shore Country Club. That's been, you know, highlighted. We are an enterprise fund. And so we are happy to host the town pool at the South Shore Country Club. This has been a project I think that's, we've worked on. Gosh, I got involved in 2017. So it's been, it's been a good long time. It's been five years and it's sort of, you know, gone into a different direction than initially. It started off as an indoor pool and now I think we've done a, we've worked really hard at sort of matching the stakeholders' wants and needs. And we're pretty excited about it. We're, we've been very budget conscious and I think as you, as you'll see, so confident in our team. Just to remind people, we did have $500,000 from CPC back in 2020 that helped us hire this great team to help us with the design and construction documents. So with that, I'm going to let Kevin start again and then we will present to you the town pool.
Great. Kevin?
Thanks, Christine. So as Christina alluded to, we, we've used the $500,000 funds from Community Preservation to do the design. And at the annual town meeting, we said that we would construct documents for a replacement eight-lane pool, 25-yard outdoor pool. And that would have a zero-depth entry for children. And then with those with special needs, a splash pad, locker rooms and infrastructure for year-round use. One of the things that we have changed in the design is that we made it a six-lane pool and that was, and that was after we consulted with the Athletic Director to ensure that we could still have high school meets there in the future if we chose to. And one of the reasons why was because of the, that cut down on the cost. Because there was a steep slope to the east of where the construction site will be, or the tennis courts. And we wanted to make sure that we stayed away from that as much as possible. So we have, you know, based on, you know, everything we have felt that the tennis courts were the best place and that's what we told the town to do. So I think the pool design that you see is a pool that is a safe pool. I think that's one of my, my experience with DCR and running 32 different pools across the state and oceans and beaches. You know, I want to ensure that it's as safe as it possibly can be, you know, for the, you know, for the families to come and enjoy, you know, an aquatic experience. The other thing too, that I think you'll find is that it's a multi-generational pool. We have areas for toddlers with a spray deck. Then we have, you know, areas for emerging swimmers and swim lessons with the, with a zero-depth entry pool. And then, you know, the competitive pool or the proficient swimming pool. So I think it's something that would please, you know, all different generations in the town of Hingham and it'll be a, a great facility, I think, and once we get it up and running. I think, you know, some things have come up as far as, you know, parking issues and things like that. We have not gone to the planning board as yet, but we are working through those issues. We have overflow parking space that we can put down on the front field. You know, we feel that, you know, those, you know, 10 to 15 days a year where we have overlapping events. And it's a good thing that we'll be busy at the country club, that we'll be able to manage it with operational, you know, management of the day, kind of having people directed in the right place. We are also creating 16 parking spots over in the, where the new maintenance building is going to be for staff. So I think we're able to kind of address that on those 10 days through management issues. I think, you know, the size of the bathhouse, I want to kind of let people know that much of that bathhouse is designated by Department of Public Health Regulations. So we have, however big your surface area is on your water, then that dictates how many showers, how many bathrooms, toilets and all that you have, do have. So what I'm going to do at this time is like Chris Roddy, who is the designer, kind of go on to the next phase and kind of go over the different elements of the project and kind of show you the nice, pretty pictures that he's come up with.
So. Did you want to review the timeline first, Kevin?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. So the, so I'm sorry, the owner project, obviously we hired the same project manager in 2020, Palmeroyne Associates, signed the contract in November. And then we went out to bid and we got RMD on board in December 2020. The schematic design was completed in 2021. The design completed in December of 2020. One, when we just had TCI Associates completed the cost estimate in January. About us were notified in November. And we did have a meeting, a Zoom meeting in December. We had a follow-up site visit last week and I see a few of them are on today as well. So we look forward to continuing discussions about their concerns and trying to alleviate those concerns and at the same time, address any of them that we possibly can. Okay, go ahead. Chris?
Thanks, Kevin. So I'll just, I'll just review the, the project a bit. And what you're, what you're looking at here is an overhead site plan and floor plan of the, the bathhouse. And the project is really comprised of four main elements. One being the bathhouse, which is the structure on the left side of your screen. The pools and the pool deck, which take up the majority of the center of the, the project. The filter and equipment building, which is located just north of the lap pool and the spray deck or splash pad, which is situated between the filter building and the bathhouse. So those are the four main elements of the design. The, the bathhouse itself is on the western side of the site. And as you approach from Bishop's Lane, that's the first thing that you see when you get to the facility. Main entrance is centered on a series of monumental stairway up from the lower parking area. And patrons can access the entry from the lower parking area or the upper parking area where the accessible parking spaces are located. All patrons must pass through the bathhouse in order to access the pool. That's one of the regulations per the Department, Department of Public Health. Itself is divided in kind of two sides on either side of the lobby. On the north side of the lobby, as Kevin mentioned, that is the area predominantly the code required areas of building, things like the changing areas, the shower rooms, the toilet rooms. And we've developed this in, in a number of different ways to try to really provide as much or as little privacy as patrons want or desire. So for instance, we have four individual separate family changing rooms where a small family can utilize without going into the, the larger open changing areas. And we also have kind of the more typical changing areas that you might see in a YMCA or a, or a high school locker room, which is more appropriate for teams. You know, individual grownups. So we're really trying to provide as much or as little privacy as possible, make it as comfortable for, for the community as we can. The other side of the lobby is more of the kind of programmatic spaces. There's a lifeguard and first aid room, a multipurpose room, which can be either an office or a conference room, could be used as a classroom, could be used for children's parties. There's a small concession area that opens directly on to the pool deck. So during the summer months, families can congregate in that corner of the pool deck under the shade structures, have lunch. There's a small storage area and there's also a separate individual toilet room directly off of the pool deck. So families don't have to trek all the way back into the bathhouse if they need to use facilities. The lobby opens up to the pool deck and the, behind the bathhouse with a very large roll-up door. The pool deck itself is sized appropriately with all the clearances required. So in the future, should the town opt to cover the pools, it is possible. Or as Kevin mentioned, two pools, one family pool and a competition lap pool. As you can see on the southern end of the, or the lower portion of the, of the family pool, as it is the zero-depth entry. And the pool slowly, gradually gets deeper until you get to the, the swimming lesson area, which is the maximum depth of three foot six. So really what we're trying to do, as Kevin alluded to, is really try to engage as many, as much of the populace as we can, you know, non-swimmers, emerging swimmers. Really tried to have the facility open, open to everybody, whether or not your, your children or adults can swim. The lap pool is a six-lane lap pool. On the eastern side of the pool, we have a ramp entry. Another means of an accessible entry to the pool. Will itself will have racing lines, lap lanes, removable starting blocks, all of the things that are really required for competition. To the north of that, I had mentioned the, the filter building. That's where all of the, all of the pool equipment will be housed directly adjacent to a large deck equipment storage. You know, the amount of, the amount of deck furniture and safety equipment is really tremendous for these types of facilities. So we really try to, you know, provide them with as much, you know, basic storage as we can. And the spray deck, it would be a combination of actual above-ground structures and deck level sprays. Trying to keep it pretty simple, but really trying to activate this as much as possible. So families can really view this as a full day experience. Because pools really aren't used really like they were in the past. You know, a lot of communities really got, use these as gathering places for families. If you can, next slide. So here's a view of the bathhouse as you approach from Bishop's Lane. What we're trying to do with the materials is use traditional materials. We have a small amount of brick, kind of harkens back to some of the existing buildings on the site. A combination of horizontal siding, some shingles. Really, we really try to get as much natural light in these buildings as possible, given the fact that, you know, there's a lot of, they can be damp at, you know, on occasion, especially with a building that's designed as a year-round facility during the winter months. You really want to try to get as much natural light in these buildings as possible. Go to the next slide. So here's an overall view of the site to give you kind of a better understanding of the, of really what, what we're intending. As you can see, the, the bathhouse is elevated from the lower parking area so that it is effectively flush with the upper parking area where the, where we have the disposable parking areas. The, you can see in the foreground, the two shade structures with picnic tables, really trying to activate that corner of the site. We are wrapping the two sides that face the parking areas with planting beds with shrubs and trees. Ground, you can see the two pools and the filter room kind of standing alone between the, just on the other side of the spray pad. So we're, we, we, we look at this project really holistically. And really just trying to make it a just, just in, just a great experience for the community. Slide.
Excellent. So we'll have Taylor McDonald review kind of the pool cost, construction budget for the, for the pool.
Sure. So what we put, put together here was hopefully a simple way to, to show how we got to our, our bottom line here. Top line. Top line, line one is our construction subtotal. So that includes the pool, the bubble infrastructure, the splash pad, the filter building. It includes everything except the bubble. That would be, you know, purchased separately by the town if they, you know, decide to go that way. It also includes any of, you know, overhead and profit that would be part of the contractor's bid. General conditions, bonds, design and pricing contingency. So all those are factored into that number. I just didn't break it out completely. Just try to keep this a little more simple. Lines two, three and four were all part of our, our first development of this. So when we were hired and Chris was hired, we were working on this simultaneously with the maintenance building. So there's funds that have already been spent that didn't have to be part of this ask here. So that's, they're pulled out of here, but I wanted to show them to show that those were accounted for in the beginning of this. Line five is our architects and engineering during construction. So this is what Chris would be doing, the construction administration phase while we are under construction. His management of the design during that. Number six, if there was any additional costs to redesign seasonal, we don't have those here being that we're going for the full, full building here. If we did break that back, there might be some redesign fees, but this is for the full, full pool with the bubble. Next was a hazmat consultant. We don't need that here. Next is our fee, the owner's project manager. That's to have a full-time manager onboard, that would be what I would be doing. As well as a part-time clerk of the works who would be onsite. We figured we'd be able to save the town some money here by doing a part-time clerk. Being that we're close by and we don't see full-time management needed here. So we think we can handle that part-time. Next, a commissioning agent, that's not going to be needed for this project. We do have a geotech monitoring during this. We have already done geotech borings onsite. Which came back good. Those were all given over to the designer as part of the design process. And so during, really the most important part of this is the excavation for the pool and the backfilling in those areas. So during that process, we would have the geotech engineer onsite monitoring that. We feel that's very critical. So again, it's, it's just an allowance based off other projects. If it comes in less, then you spend less, but that's a, a good amount to carry. Line 11 is legal fees. This is just in case lawyers have to review any, anything that might come up. We carry a small amount there. We don't foresee much there. Line, lines 12 and 13 are for furniture and fixtures and pool equipment. We were carrying a little bit more in these. Speaking to Kevin and Chris, we, we brought those down a little bit. Again, whatever we don't need to spend there, we don't have to spend. And Kevin said he'd be able to, you know, probably use some of his, some of his budget there in case anything else additional was needed. We're carrying a, a security system allowance. This would be for a pretty simple camera system and access control system. Next is a phone system allowance. This is to install the, the actual hardware and software for a new phone system there. As part of the bid, all of the conduits, back boxes provisions would be installed. Wiring too. So this is for the actual system itself. We're not carrying any loose equipment or move costs. You're not moving anything from an old pool to this, this pool. There's no financing fees. Utility company back charges is a, is a funny one. That is the cost that National Grid or EverSource would charge you to install their service. We just went through, when we went to go install the gas, we got a pretty hefty fee to the maintenance building. So we actually looked at alternatives and that's one of the reasons we're going electric there. But we're carrying that to be safe in case we, you know, have to, you know, pay back any of the utilities there. Material testing, this is for the testing of the soils, the concrete compaction. We always carry a third party there that does that testing to keep the town safe. And we figure about $20,000 is safe here. Again, whatever is not spent, it's turned back over to the town. So your soft cost combined with your construction subtotal is a little over 7.5 million. And then we recommend carrying a, a soft cost and owner's contingency here, which is 4% on top of your construction subtotal and the owner's development subtotal. Again, that is really for any unforeseen conditions that might come up. Any change orders, things like that, that it would cover in the construction project. So the grand total of that is $7,897,000 is your full construction budget there.
Thanks, Taylor. So one of the things I, I did want to mention, you know, the, you know, the two pools and we, how we separated or segregated the two pools from the, from the zero-depth entry pool to the larger pool. Originally in the design, there was the, those pools were kind of just connected at the very end. And you could walk from the zero-depth entry into the larger pool. But for a number of different factors, one, I think, you know, safety-wise, having, you know, the, the zero-depth entry connected, it's better to have it segregated. Two, you're always going to have continuity of service. So the, the two pools will run separately. So therefore, if anything happens to one, you'll always have the other pool up and running. And the other thing too is it's, it's a better, for like swimming, it's a things of that nature, that it's, it's better to have that pool kind of designed the way it is. So I think there's a number of different factors and the reason why we made that decision. I think if you ever do go to a year-round, you know, operation, then it's, you, you're going to have to have both bodies of water at separate temperatures. So for instance, like you'd want the competitive pool to be, say, at 78 degrees. And then the learn-to-swim pool, emerging swimming pool to be a little bit warmer, say at 83 or 84 degrees. So that's kind of the reason why we decided to go and segregate those two pools and separate them. You know, in, from just being one lodge pool to having two separate pools. So we can go to the next slide. These are just some of the benchmark communities that, you know, Hingham uses to show, you know, what they have for pools, some indoor, some outdoor. But almost two-thirds do have some type of pool. And so, you know, obviously we've had that, we had the pool until a few years ago here at the country club. You know, until the, the building was not able to sustain itself any longer. So we can go to the next slide. These numbers are, you know, from Mark to all what we've run. So we, you know, we really project that we'll be able to increase these numbers dramatically based on the facility that we're proposing. We feel that we'll definitely be able to run this facility, you know, on its own as a seasonal operation without any issues. And I think we'll, we feel we'll be very successful on that. So this is, these numbers are the last year that Mark was in operation at the country club. Let me go to the next phase, next slide rather. So the pool construction timeline would be town meeting April 25th. Pool project would be out to bid May and June. And then probably award the bid to the contractor July 1st, construction date August 1st. And pool completed by an open July 1st, 2023. It's going to take anywhere between probably nine to 12 months to build this facility. So we're hoping to get out to, to bid and have a shuttle on the ground as quickly as possible, you know, in the summertime, late summer. That's it.
Then I guess the only thing that, that I would add is just to keep, to keep in mind too, is we've been undergoing sort of the master plan process. And so all of this, you know, having the, having, having the town pool at the country club is part of our master plan. And then we will deal with, you know, taking down the existing pool structure and maintenance facility underneath. But it's all part of a, it's all part of a plan and this is the team that's been helping us put it together and we're, we're, we're pretty excited about it. So, thank you.
Yeah. And I think one of the things that's important that we, we try to take care of, the pool is on the east portion of the, of the, you know, the facility. And the maintenance building is on the west side and both those are obviously big needs. So what we want to do is kind of, we knew, you know, that those, that's where those two projects would be going. And then we can focus on the middle for the master plan for the remainder of the, the facility after these two have, you know, on their way and getting to getting done.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for the team, really, for putting this together and giving a thorough presentation. Bill, I, I'd like to start with you, if you don't mind, if you've got questions on the pool project.
Yeah. So, well, thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank Christine and Kevin for, you know, the great work you've done here for, for quite a long time. And I know a lot of miles to go here, but you've done some great work and I really appreciate all the work you've done. What's the total ask of the article?
So it would be the 7897 minus the, that would probably be the ask of the article, Bill, and it would be reduced if the 550,000 from from CPC is voted, then we can, you know, lower the, the price of the article.
7897 minus the 550. And I know Christine, you do, you're doing some great work trying to do some private fundraising as well, correct?
Yeah, I was actually in touch with, we've always been in touch with Hingham Sports Partnership. And we've also started about five years ago, there is a 501(c)(3) called the Friends of the South Shore Country Club. That's involved in fundraising. That was a much more, I'd say, we were really busy with fundraising the first time around. This has been, you know, more about the country club in general, but, but, but there is some, some fundraising, but, but, but that, but that is the ask.
Okay, great. And Tom, would this all be fund balance?
Yeah, funding to be determined for sure, but we would probably borrow this amount, Joe, Bill.
It's going to be borrowed.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, great. All right. All right. Good to know that, that, you know, I just, just a quick comment. So, you know, the last two summers, we haven't had the pool. And, you know, my, my children and my family use this pool quite a bit. And, you know, my, and the summer is particularly in the afternoon, my, my children would go over there almost every day. And I would take them over, they would go to rec camp in the mornings and we'd go over there in the afternoon. And they absolutely loved it. And I would go over there at about three o'clock and Mark can probably correct me if I'm wrong. And they would have open swim from like three to five, three to six. And it would be full of families over there. And it was a wonderful, wonderful gathering spot for so many young families. And it wasn't just young families, you know, in the mornings. And, and I think Mark can correct, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be open for any residents who wanted to exercise, to use the pool. I love the fact that the rec department, under Mark's leadership, employed high school students to, to work as lifeguards. The partnership between the, the country club and the rec department was, was, was wonderful to see that. So we were employing, giving high school students jobs. And when I was a high school student, I benefited from these types of jobs in town and it was great for me growing up. And it was wonderful to see those type of partnerships. So I really feel that the last two years, we've had a void, not having this type of a gatherings place in town. So I am 100% behind this. I think this is a wonderful project. And I just, I, I guess, again, I can't thank Kevin and Christine enough for the, the work they've done on this project. And look forward to this going forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Liz?
Yes, thank you, Kevin and Christine and Chris and Taylor too, for joining us this evening. It's a very impressive design. I know, Chris, you've worked very hard on it, listening to all of the requirements. I must say, it, it has been a very thoughtful process. Looking at safety always being paramount, but looking at programming needs and thinking about future programming needs, making sure that it's a multi-generational pool and facility. It's, I, I've been very impressed. And, and, you know, I think everyone has, has tried really hard to think about forward-thinking, how this pool could be used by all different community members and, and meeting those needs. And even with the bathhouse, thinking about safety and family-style bathrooms. It's, it's been, again, I can't say enough about the process and, and the thoughtfulness that has gone into this. So thank you for all of the work. I know it's, it's a daunting task to, to design this. And, and we certainly appreciate it. I echo Bill's comments. I think it's, it's an important piece of our community and a nice gathering spot that, that we certainly need in town. So thank you.
I, I share Liz's, Liz's and Bill's thoughts as well. I want to just follow up on, on a question. This is going to be an area that will attract families. It will be used. Is there sufficient space around the pools so that when families come, they can actually lay out in the sun or you know, have, have fun? Do, do, do we have a sufficient space so that people won't, families won't be crowded out?
Yeah, absolutely. The pool, I mean, the pool deck is actually going to be larger than the normal pool deck because of the, you know, the, the bubble, the foundation for the bubble. And we have about another 10 feet more than what you would normally have around a pool deck. So there'll be ample space around the pool deck for families to, you know, enjoy, enjoy both pools and the facility.
Right.
Bill?
And I, I just want, one more kind of question, comment, Kevin. I, I, I do have a little bit of a concern about, about your parking layout, you know, but I'm going to leave that to my colleagues on the planning board. But I'm going to, going to have to think hard about that, just knowing the setup out there and having done a lot of time on the planning board. You know, summertime with all your golfers up there and knowing how popular this might be. You're going to have to think about, you know, I, I think on your upper, you know, upper part of the club up there, you don't have a lot of parking. And, you know, over, over where the old pool is, that fills up with golfers.
Right.
So if you look at the other spot there, that's not a lot of parking. So I'm going to ask you, you know, think about getting creative there, about where you're going to put the additional cars. But, you know, I'll leave that to the planning board, right now, looking at.
Right. And that design team has been, in the engineering team, probably the engineers on the, on our team have been looking at that. I mean, one of the things that we have done, I think, you know, there aren't going to be those days and we're going to have, we know that we're going, not going to have enough parking. And what we've talked to some of the boards is about the front field on those, you say 10 or 15 days a year that we could utilize the front field as an overflow parking. I don't think any of us really want to create any more like asphalt space up on, up at the, up at the country club. So, you know, we are looking at, you know, some additional parking. There's the lower road too, that goes to where the maintenance building is. That could have some angle parking on it as well. So we're, we're looking at all those and obviously those would be kind of more temporary or seasonal type parking. But I think we're looking at all the different options that we have available to us.
I guess, Bill, the only thing that I would add is to think about, when you talk about crowds, also consider that before where the pool was located, the pool and the golfers, they were completely intermingled. We always had a safety concern. This is going to, this is going to feel very different because when you come up, we're going to create a loop to the right for golfing. And then you come all the way up the hill and it'll be a loop to the left for the pool. So those two, at least, you know, pieces of traffic will be very separate and very different than it was before. I feel much better about the safety of that, of that setup. And then, and then, and then we'll deal with the parking.
That's a great point, because you're right, before it was just totally intermingled. That's great. Bill, you, you good? Okay. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? Chris Jones.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
And if you could just give your name and address, please.
Sure. Sure. So Chris Jones, 20 Del Prat Drive of Butter to the, to the country club. And thanks for the opportunity to comment. I do want to acknowledge Kevin and Christine in the outreach they've done to the, to the neighborhood of Del Prat as a Butters to the South Shore Country Club. Kevin and Christine have been generous with their time in answering our questions, even taking us on a site, a physical site tour last week. And as a Butters and neighbors, we've asked many questions and, and have raised a, a number of concerns. First, I think we want to acknowledge our support for a pool at the South Shore Country Club. It's been an important part of our community. We recognize that. Our kids grew up on swim team and as families, I am as nostalgic about the pool as, as Bill articulated. We, we think it's, it's a wonderful resource. Second, I want to recognize the healthy relationship, the neighbors of Del Prat Tribe had with the country club over the years when we've historically supported all the betterments and improvements that they've wanted, whether it be all the betterments and improvements that they've wanted, whether it be expanding the driving range or adding the tent. The proposed location of the pool is, it's certainly towards the quieter side of the country club. I think historically, we may hear the pop of a tennis racket or occasional golf club from the driving range. Or a few times during the summer, the, an event at the tent while being disruptive, it's so infrequent. What's proposed for this location is a large scale commercial venture that doesn't aim to replace the seasonal community pool that we once had. It aims to be a destination that runs 365 days a year. So it's a bit of a different proposal and does does, I guess, propose to disrupt the neighborhood and what we're used to further the concern around parking. It sounds like, trust me, we'll work it out on the fly. Del Prat abuts the neighborhood. There are paths through the woods to the country club and we certainly don't want our neighborhood to become a drop off spot as people try to, try to game the parking situation at the country club. So, so that is of concern. I again want to compliment Kevin's outreach, Christine's engagement, Chris Roddy's plan. It is a magnificent municipal pool and a gold plated one at that. I mean, it is a great design, but it is one that proposes a number of concerns. But I know this is geared towards the funding. So just as it relates to the funding, the previous agenda item reflected that we missed the budget by about 36%. It was a 2.2 million, based on the, the quick numbers I saw, it was a 2.2 million initial ask and we missed the bid by 800,000. So by my math, that missed it by 36%. This is an $8 million project and if we find ourselves halfway across the ocean in, in a decision point for additional funding, if we miss it by 36%, that's almost $3 million and a hefty ask. And I think based on inflation and the price of lumber and construction, that's likely we've proven that handicapping construction cost to be a mighty task and this is a high stakes project. So there's a number of concerns. I will say again, Kevin and Christine have been wonderful with their time, but there are many other concerns we have, but those are a few. And where this is just about the funding, my concern is missing the mark by 36%. It's, it's a tall order. And I'll just end by looping back to, we are supporters of a pool in Hingham. We are supporters of a pool in the country club. We think the proposed location is an error. The proposal of a bubble is of great concern, but I understand that would be a separate ask of of a funding decision. So to the extent that is a separate vote, I will, I will pause any comments on that, but you know, we look to work with Kevin, Christine, other members to, to address our concerns. And again, I don't, I am not spokesman for the, for the neighborhood, but I do think my comments reflect proxy for the neighborhood and I would ask if, if any other neighbors, and there's many of them on this call, to, to maybe speak up. But thank you for the opportunity.
Chris, and thank you for your, your thoughtful comments. Kevin or Christine, did you want to take an opportunity to respond?
I think on the, on the pricing question, it's, it's a different process that we followed. I think, you know, this one was the typical process of where you hired the, the project manager professionals and the designer and worked together to come up with the estimate. When we did the 2.2 million dollars, that was really after talking to a few people in the industry, hoping that we would be able to build a building for. And what happened in that instance was that it's when we went out, you know, when we went out to bid and did the estimates, it was just different. It was the prices were just a lot higher. But it was not done in this, it was a totally different process. It was just me kind of picking a number and it was based on the number that we could afford at the time. Because the country club was not as in greatest financial position as it is currently. We've turned our business around. I mean, the one good thing for us, that COVID has been very good for our business. And we have been making, you know, our balance sheet is much better than it was two years ago when we requested the 2.2. If our finances were as good as they are now, I probably would have requested additional funding. And that's why we kind of stuck with that 2.2 because that's what we felt we could comfortably pay back at the time.
And the other thing I would add to that too is that was pre-COVID, but that was, you know, we did that just before the bottom fell out. So that was a sort of a little bit of a, of a, of a different fitting environment. And we've also gotten a little bit more comfortable because we've already done the site work. We, you know, we, we've dealt with the maintenance facility. We have people that are, that are interested in this work. And coupled with that, we know, we do have contingencies built into this plan. And that, you know, and a lot of this work is, it's horizontal construction. It's not vertical construction, which is a little different. And I think we've got a, you know, we've, we've got a good team. We've got, you know, we, we've got great cost estimators and, and you know, we're hoping to get moving, you know, quickly to help, you know, sort of the uncertainty that Chris highlighted.
And I, I think another distinction is the maintenance facility was really an emergency project. Right. And the pool is not. That's something that's, that's been planned. It's great need for the town, but I, I think there really were different circumstances. And with respect to the comment that this is a, a 365 day pool, it is not. It is currently planned only as an outdoor facility. In fact, to the extent that CPC funds are being used, they cannot be used to create an indoor facility. So that is not currently in the works. It is being built so that could be available in the future, but that is certainly not what's going on currently. With respect to the parking issues and impacts on neighborhood, that is exactly why the planning board has jurisdiction and that is exactly the forum where those types of questions should be raised. So I'm glad you raised them today, but please be assured that the town's permitting boards will in fact be looking at the very questions that you've asked, Chris. So with that, I see Michelle Doran, your hand is raised.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for letting me talk. I'm joining today not as
I can interrupt, just please give us your address.
Sure. Michelle Doran, 919 Main Street in Hingham. I'm not in a butter to this project, but I grew up in Hingham near the pool, use the pool, love the pool. I do think the town needs a pool. I agree with Chris Jones. I'm just wondering with the funding, I, I think Chris's point was well taken, that no project comes in at budget or under budget. So I think that's a really important thing to consider. And when I was, I'm sorry, I'm late to the party if there have been other meetings that I should have joined. But when a lot of the talk was about this is fulfilling needs of the community, is that based on assumptions or actually community needs assessments?
There was an assessment, yeah. And Kevin, and then Tom, I don't know if you want to comment on the, the long range planning process that's been going on in town and the, the outreach to the community in terms of the needs that the town faces over the next couple of years. But I'm sorry, Kevin, you can please, please start.
Yeah, back in, I believe it was 2017, we did have a firm that did do an assessment of what the needs were for the pool. I can't remember the, was it BHNA? I can't remember who the, the firm was that was prior to my arriving here at, at Tana Hingham. But we did have an assessment done that was completed back in 2017 as far as what the needs were for the town.
And I'd say we had a survey as part of that and it strongly supported, strongly supported the, supported the pool as, as well as the master plan, which I think somebody else was going to address.
Yeah. Tom, can you, can you speak about the master plan?
Sure. So just, just before I do that, Joe, just real quick, Ms. Doran, I just wanted to touch, based on your comment about projects not coming in on, on budget. That is absolutely most people's experience with municipal projects. However, I am proud to report that we just heard earlier tonight that we're actually working on rescinding, unissued and, but authorized debt for, I believe upwards of 10 projects, eight of which did come in under budget prior to 2011. So the town does have a history of, of managing to project budgets. So I just, to the extent that that gives you any comfort, I just wanted to mention that. The, yes, the town has recently gone through a master planning process run by the, by the planning board. And that process is complete. It's a significant process. It covers just about any, any and all aspect of municipal governance that you can imagine. And, and these types of projects are, are a big component of that, of that project. Joe, what other?
I think that's important to, to realize that, that, that there has been an outreach over many months to members of the community to understand the priorities that, that residents feel and the swimming pool was one of those priorities. So Michelle, your hand is up, but did, did you have a follow up question or, okay, please?
Okay, um, so I heard two, I heard a couple of different things that there was a need assess, a needs assessment in 2017. That's a long time ago. And that, is this the only plan that we can consider as a town? Is it a black and white? It's this or nothing? Or is there something that's not supersized?
Um, I don't, I mean, do you want me to take it? I mean, I, I guess I would say that we've been, the pool, the town pool closed in 2019. And so we've actually been, we've been actually working on this back in 2017. We started developing a plan because we knew the pool was at the end of its useful life. And there's been, there's been a lot, a lot of community outreach as part of that. There was a town survey that was done that I think close to 3,000 people answered, answered it very specifically in a very short period of time. There was, you know, things done up at the library. There was a lot of community outreach as part of the master planning process. We heard loud and, loud and clear from the, from the townspeople that they wanted a town pool.
And so 3,000 out of the whole town was, was your response rate, which is a, which is a self-select sample, actually.
So it was, I, I would say that, that it was a pretty, it was a pretty, it was a pretty, we did our best. It was, it was a pretty broad reach. It was available.
But that's not the whole town. That's a very small.
So I guess, I guess to your, to your point about whether or not there's another plan.
Yeah. This is the plan. So it's this or nothing. We either vote on this or there's, you go back to the drawing board. We fund this or we get nothing.
We don't, we don't have an option.
So I, I mean, I think the answer is if either we fund this or not, and if it is not funded, the town will have to look at other options. So we're not making, there's not a vote on, are there no other options? We currently have an option before us that has been researched extensively. And that's the vote, whether or not we should proceed with this option. Great. I see L. Plunkett. I don't know what your first name is.
Hi, sorry. Lacy Plunkett, 5 Autumn Circle in Hingham. I, we are new to town, so I'm just trying to get up to speed and you know, understand what's going on. I have a very simple general question. I believe it was the second to last slide. It said some of the revenue would come from 245 families. I was just curious if that was a capped number, if that's an estimated number or historical number. Just curious where that number came from.
That number was from the, that number, Lindsay, was from the old pool that was operating back, you know, in 2019 was the last year that it operated it. So it's an historically based number based on the prior swimming pool?
Correct, correct. And we, this, this, this project would definitely have more capacity to serve the residents of Hingham.
Good. Stephanie Jones, please give us your address.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Jones at 20 Del Prat Drive, also in a butter, the wife of Chris Jones who spoke earlier. And I just had a further follow up question. I have a couple of questions. One is about the assessment and how the project became so grand. Did, was, I mean, was the assessment about, do people want a pool? Because we know that the whole, most of the town, I think, wants a pool. Or was the assessment about, we need three pools and a splash pad and a big bath house and like, did the community have say in the grandness of what this became? Was that part of what people were asked?
I, I think we took the directive from the annual town meeting vote of 2020, which said that we would, you know, build an eight lane lap pool. And actually, we designed a six lane lap pool. We said that we would have a zero depth entry section of the pool, which we've designed as well with a splash pad. So we took that directive from the annual town meeting back in 2020 and turned that into the plan that we do have today.
So that sounds like one pool to me, an eight lane lap pool with a zero entry.
So generally speaking, Stephanie, when you have zero depth entry, that would be on the side, as I think I stated earlier. We decided to make it, split it into the two pools rather than having just the one zero depth entry kind of hooking into, say, the larger pool. We decided that through the design process to do that.
But that wasn't an assessment.
Essentially, what, my point is essentially it was, what we did was you would have almost the same identical sized pool. It would just be that you would, what we did was we just didn't have them connected for a variety of reasons that I went over earlier.
But I mean, it's significantly bigger, it looks like than the, the pool that was there that had a zero entry and lanes. This looks like almost twice the size of that, but maybe I'm just underestimating the landmass of, of how much this pool is gonna, these three pools are gonna sit on compared to what the existing pool was. I just, my concern is, you know, looking at this number and that the town has to decide on this pool, like to the other point, is it this pool or another pool? Not having an option of, well, we could get a pool for half that cost, a quarter of that cost and really meet the needs of what the community wants. I'm just wondering how much the community need reflected this grand plan of what the pool became and how that was assessed.
Kevin?
Or if it was assessed.
Yeah, please, Chris, you can weigh in, please. Thank you.
So regarding the size of the pool and, and I'll, I'll just try to clarify what Kevin was saying. So the, the original directive was an eight lane pool, lap pool. One that had a zero depth entry. And if you think about, we don't have the image up in front of us, but by reducing the size of the eight lane pool to make it six lanes, the as Kevin noted, the, the total size of the body of water doesn't really change dramatically between what was, would originally have been designed and this design. And part of that is because if you think about a lap pool, the, in order to make, for competition swimming, the shallow end is at three foot six deep. In this case, the deep end is roughly around five but six. In order for a zero depth entry to work, you have to transition from, you know, deck level gradually down to three foot six before you make the transition into the six lane pool area. So that whole transition from the deck level down to three foot six takes up a large portion of the family pool. So if you consider just the fact, if we weren't going to have a zero depth entry, then sure, maybe you could reduce the size of the pool, but because that's such an important aspect for, for non-swimmers and toddlers, it, it, it really, it gives you the size of the pool that, that there is without much leeway unless, unless you reduce that to a, a narrow ramp, which doesn't really give back to the community that much.
And well, it gives back what we had, right? That's what we had. We had a ramp that was zero depth entry and it was a very small footprint for that part of it. Okay, so it's sounding to me like the grandness of this project wasn't assessed in the community. But my separate question, or maybe it was, and it's not clear to me where and how that was assessed, other than we know that you assessed that the town wants a pool and gave money to design a plan that would replace the pool that we have. And this is much, much more than that and much costlier, I think, than it would have been to replace the pool that we have. The other comment that I was hoping you would talk about is there are wetlands right next to that pool. There's, there's a, there's a vernal pool that's there. There's wildlife in the woods behind us with deers and coyotes. Was there any assessment of the impact on the environment? I know there was something about the distance from the, the vernal pool, but, but could you guys speak to that a little bit of how that was all assessed?
Sure. Well, the Sure, well, the part of the process, the design process was, you know, the, the property was surveyed. The extent of the wetlands was flagged. The buffer zones were surveyed. And by taking all that, of all of that information, we designed the facility to be outside of the. Buffer zone for those wetlands and the vernal pool. So in order to have minimal impact. On those areas. And I, I think by reducing the size of the lap pool from eight to six lanes. We were able to do that successfully.
So I, I, I think the answer on that question will ultimately be decided by the Conservation Commission. Which has jurisdiction for protection of vernal pools. So, uh, those are among the, the local permits that will be required. And, um, I, I think what we have before us is. The plan for a pool based on a great amount of research, a great amount of planning. In fact, the charge. To this group really was to do the planning and to make its proposal as to what makes sense. And ultimately, it will be town meeting that will decide if this makes sense or not. So that, that's the stage where we're at, where we are at right now. Are there other members of the public, comments or questions? You do not look like Arlene raising your hand, even though that's the name that appears. There's Arlene. Okay, Arlene, Arlene Moynihan, if you could also give us. Your name and address as well.
I'm Jimmy Moynihan, Arlene's husband. We live at seventeen Del Pret Drive, four across the street from the Joneses, Steve Butters. Um, I don't have a problem with the pool in and of itself. Uh, this is purely budget related questioning. Approximately, I think you said it was like seven point eight million dollars for this project. When you went through the revenue side of the equation, you had certain things in there that I'm not sure add up to this not being a full time, full time year round pool. Swim team is part of your revenue. So can you just go through how are you gonna pay off this seven point eight million dollars? And that's a rounding number. It may be the wrong exact number. Did you do any type of an assessment on, again, looking at the other clubs around the area? Waymouth Club is an example, granted that's a private entity, but the point being, what, if, if it does go year round, what's the cost? If this goes just as a, a seasonal summertime pool. It used to be about three hundred twenty-six dollars per family, well worth it in my opinion, but where was the price gonna have to go? To make this a revenue, um, that you could, you, the revenue will cover the cost of the, of the, the, uh. Of the funding.
Oh, I, I think the, the funding part, the, what we will do when we operate this pool is we will operate the, the operating costs of the pool. There is the, the funding portion of the revenue that we generate will not go to, it's the debt service on the pool. It would just go for the operation of the pool. And I think one of the things that we, when we, um, have gone through this process in the initial larger project that was proposed. Um, you know, it became quite clear that the country club, um, is not a place that we can actually afford to pay. For the debt service of the pool and that this would be a town function and provided as a service to the residents of Hingham.
Right, so in, in, in fact, that is, I believe, one of the topics that was covered at the annual town meeting earlier. This is intended to be a town pool, um, so the debt service is on the town, it's not on the country club.
Okay, and then just, this is the, the old pool, the decommissioning, is that part of any of this? Is that a totally separate project that's gonna happen? There's nothing to do with the, the pool in and of itself or the, the new, um, maintenance facility?
So the maintenance building is, so those would be more, those would be golf course related or country club related. And we would, uh, we would pay for those through our, uh, you know, operating budget. Or raising funds through, for debt service.
Okay, thank you.
Great question, thank you. Anyone else? I see, uh, yes, Jen McGuire, your hand is raised literally and also on, on the screen, so please proceed and give us your address.
Hi, Jen McGuire, twenty-two Del Pret Drive, um, also in a butter. I had, um, kind of a clarification question and a budget question. Um, again, I love the idea of a pool. Um, most of my concerns lie in the. Change of the home I bought, um, but that's not for this meeting. Uh, my budgetary question is, there's been a lot of back and forth between if this is a three hundred sixty-five day pool or not. I know Chris mentioned three hundred sixty-five and it was corrected that it's not three hundred sixty-five days. But just looking at the line items, it seems like everything is planning for a three hundred sixty-five day pool. Um, and even under line six, when it says cost to redesign to seasonal, it's left blank. So I guess I'm looking for clarification if this funding is for a three hundred sixty-five day pool or a seasonal pool. And if it is changing to seasonal, how that affects the budget and the plan?
Chris, you wanna explain that?
Sure, so the scope of this project is to provide the capacity. So that in the future, should the town wish to cover the pool and make it a year round facility. Uh, that's possible. But. By making that decision, the, it dramatically affects the, the way that the facility is designed. You know, from the size of the pool deck, the construction of the bath house. Across the board, it's, it's hard to compare the two. Because you have to, you know, the bath house has to be designed as a year round facility now. Uh, because it really can't, you know, you can't come back and retrofit all of the things that would. Be required down the road when that was, what would happen. So, um, does that affect the cost? Absolutely.
So, so, Jen, you, you are, you're muted, so we're not hearing you, but I'm, I'm just gonna. Respond that what the project before us is a seasonal pool. It is not three sixty-five. It's been designed so that if in the future the town wants to go that route, we would not have to undo things. We, we, you know, there'll, there'll be the foundation to move forward. And that, that may require additional funding. The town may or may not opt to go that route. Uh, but right now, what's before us is the seasonal pool. But Jen, we, I still can't hear you. If you, if you wanted to, please unmute yourself. There you go.
I, I, I wasn't allowed to unmute myself. Thank you. I just got permission. Um, so yeah, so I, just to, to follow up on that, so nothing would need to be added to the budget to winterize it, so to speak. Or to, if it's not bubbled, to keep the pool from running, there wouldn't be any additional cost from that respect.
So there.
That makes sense.
If it's intended to be running. If it's not bubbled, um, people will not be swimming in the ice, so there will be no, no effort.
Yes, I understand that. I'm saying to the construction of the pool, uh, nothing would need to be added as a line item to. Keep it like fine from being covered. How would it be? What would be the additional line items to winterize it so that it is the coverings and so?
So, so I, I think what you're asking is, is does the current budget. Uh, handle or address how the pool will be maintained during the winter season when it's not operating?
Yes.
Is that? Yes, it does. The, the, there, there would not be any additional cost to maintain it. It's, that's factored in and. You know, the, it, it would end up being an operational issue as far as winterization of the pool, draining it, you know, things like that, that. Are outside of the scope of the project.
And then my second question was, I was wondering if there were any, um, financial considerations in terms of. Replacing vegetation in terms of how the environment back there will be affected. Is that in the consideration? I, I didn't see that in a line item, so I was just wondering.
There, there is.
Additional vegetation in term, um, for what is being taken out and replacing to maintain the woodland. Appearance back there.
Short answer is yes, there is quite a bit of plantings being proposed, um, along the perimeter. But part of what we were doing, and I think we tried to address this on during the walkthrough last week. We're really trying to not impinge. The existing vegetation out there. I mean, we do, obviously, there is the clearing that goes up to the top of that. Uh, hill where it starts to drop off. So there are some small, uh. Shrub type trees, but, uh, we are, uh, proposing to a fair amount of replacement. Taylor?
Yeah, I just wanted, this, this is, doesn't go to the landscaping question, but this goes back to, um, what Jen asked about that line six. And I think I just might be able to clarify it a little more, so. So a- as, um, the chair said, it is designed to be a, a three hundred and sixty-five, um, you know, day a year, uh, facility. So, um, Chris got to a point in his design where he, you know, basically we had to make the decision, is this designed for three hundred and sixty-five days? Or is this seasonal? So we went forward with the seasonal design. Now I carried line six in there, uh, meaning. If for whatever reason the town decided to go to a seasonal facility and he had to redesign something. Meaning take out that three hundred and sixty-five, you know, day capacity, there would be a cost to that, so. Um, cause he would be doing work again, so there is no cost because we went forward. I could, I could probably take that line out of there. It's probably confusing. Um, but, so that's, that's what that is. If, if whatever reason we went to a seasonal pool, there would be a redesign fee for that.
Well, we are at a seasonal pool. That, that's what's gonna be.
Correct, but it's designed, it's designed for.
It has the capacity.
Capacity, right.
Correct, but if, if Chris were to design a pool that was only, only seasonal. And it could not accept a bottle, a bubble, then you would be looking at a redesign.
Right, right, exactly. Chris, I do see, Chris Jones, I see your hand raised, but I'm just see if there's anyone else who has not yet spoken that has a question. Patty McDonald. If you could give us your name and address, please.
Sure, um, my name is Patty McDonald. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Patty McDonald. I live at forty-five Old County Road. I have no relationship to Taylor. It's a totally different spelling, so I just wanna. Say that disclaimer. Um, so I'm, I grew up in Hangum, youngest of six. Gilbert's the main name. Bill, we were in Jasmine together. Love to see your face on these meetings. Um, we, um. I, I have a daughter who is a swimmer in Hangum High. I live with elderly parents. And I've been following this project and, and volunteering on and off on supporting the project. Um, I just wanna address the grandness and assumptions that due diligence wasn't sort of made. I, I think the purpose of this meeting is to talk about the finance and, and to vote on that. And this is my first time actually participating in this. And so I think that's sort of duly noted. Maybe that's an education effort. Maybe more information needs to be shared, but my understanding that this is a very conservative number. It's a very conservative design based on a lot of designs that have been developed to date. Um, I think there was fifteen million at one point at the table and. I just wanna point out, we are so lucky to have Kevin in charge and Christine, who has just been methodical and patient in her leadership. Cause Kevin has years and years of experience of designing and running pools. And so Hangum is like so. I, I feel like we're not going grand enough to be candid. And so investing in a pool that could expand in the future. To actually support the Hangum High School swim team where my daughter was the captain. I could say all these bitter things about how the town has not supported her and how she had to go to Waymouth to practice and how. She never was on a team that had a starting block. I think there's so much income and potential by invest, doing a smart investment initially. And then continuing the dialogue and showing how this asset would really support elderly, my parents. They could, you know, do indoor and seasonal, uh, water, um, therapies. Uh, indoor and outdoor swim teams, special needs. I think we're just, um, hitting the, the tip of the iceberg by thinking this is a replacement of the old pool. My understanding, this is a first step to, to something truly building a lifelong asset that will grow, but in a methodical, conservative way. So that's been my impression of how this team has come together and I just wanted to kind of bring that perspective. So thank you.
Thank you, um, thank you, Penny. So, uh, I see at this point, no one else other than Chris, so please, you, you have the floor again, Chris Jones.
Thank you. So, Chris Jones, I'm sure a fan favorite at this point, twenty Del Pret Drive. Just, I wanted to put a point on Jen's comment, neighbor of mine, as it relates to the vegetation. I know in, through the, through the, uh, discussions, there's been an indication, I sure will, will put some. Some, uh, a vegetative screen. Having had a kid on swim team at, at the South Shore Country Club. I know how spirited parents can get on an early, early Saturday morning yelling and cheering their kids on. And now we'll get to be part of that with this pool being, uh, a few hundred feet from our backyard. So I do think some consideration to the Butters in the form of a vegetative screen. Some consideration of that, which we've, have received assurances that that will be considered, but we've yet to see it in a plan. And we've yet to get to the point of, okay, what kind of trees? And if we can, if we can work together, and I'm sure Kevin and Christine. Uh, we'll, we'll, we can, we, we can reengage on those things, but, but we would love to see something like that in a, in a design. Where that, that screen is, uh, reflective, because to the extent this pool's gonna be where it is. I, 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 I think that where the existing pool is, is far more conducive. It's to everyone's point. It's where the business happens today. It's not affecting what is historically a quiet side of the country club. I think a bubble next to the solar farm on the West Hingham T stop doesn't provide a real contrast. In, uh, an industrial feel, whereas certainly against our property, a bubble is like landing a, a blimp. And never leaving it and always leaving it running as those fans run to keep that bubble inflated. And I know it's not what we're talking about today, but there are major concerns with the scale of this. And while Patty, I appreciate the hardship of, uh, needing to drive to Hangum for, for swim team. I think this is, uh, this is, this proposes to have a far larger impact. Than, uh, that, that level of inconvenience, so. But I, but I do agree, Kevin, Christine, Chris's plan. You know, you're, you're an asset to the, to the, um, to the community, so I don't want this to be. Uh, discouraging in, in, in the context of my feedback, but I do wanna communicate concerns to the extent I believe they're relevant.
So, Chris, thank you, and I just wanna support you in the sense that this is the forum for you to, to speak your, speak your mind. And to make sure that your views are being heard, so. I, I, I support, encourage, uh, you and your neighbors, uh, to speak out, that's, but ultimately. It, it will be the town that will make the decision. Uh, and just so we're clear, what's before us is a Warren article. The next step, assuming that the select board decides to advance it, is we'll go to the advisory committee. There will be further review. Um, so, and then ultimately, uh, it may be presented to town meeting where there will be give and take and ultimately a decision made. Uh, with that, I see Kelly Smallcomb, is that correct? If you could give us your address.
Yes, this is actually John Smallcomb. I'm at eighteen Del Pret Drive. I'm also in a butter, next to the Jones family. I have two questions. Uh, one's on noise level. I'm just curious what kind of work has been done to test. The amount of noise that would come from the facility. And then the second is around just the decision, if it were to become a three hundred and sixty-five day venue. What would the forum be to make that decision? How does that happen? Thank you.
So, uh, Kevin, can you address the, uh, the noise question?
I think Chris would be better to, uh, to, I mean, he's, you know, looked into a few of the issues that they, they have raised as far as some of the noise on the pumps and the. In pumps and the gen, the, uh, filter filtration systems. So Chris, you can speak to that.
Sure, I mean, I, I'm assuming that the noise would be, uh, the, the question about noise is. If it becomes a three hundred and sixty-five day year. Uh, and you're worried about the, the, um, equipment for the bubble. So regarding that specifically, we have reached out and have test reports from the manufacturer that we've been working with. Uh, which I shared last week, uh, for decibel levels, uh, at the units. Hundred feet away from the units, two hundred and ten feet away from the units. And at two hundred and ten feet away from the units, uh, it's an average of about, I think, forty-two decibels, which. Quite low. The, uh. The pumps for the. The uh, the pumps for the pool equipment are housed within a uh. Within the fil- uh, filtration building, they're not out on the pool deck. Those would be, you would not actually hear those at all, it would be, because they're indoors. Uh, in a well insulated building in a pump pit, so that um, is really no. There wouldn't be any issue with, with that noise, uh, regarding the day-to-day activities. I mean, you know, kids are kids and, you know, there's no way of, of, you know, I, I. I don't have data about that.
Well, I was, I was thinking about it if it wasn't a bubble, so are there any average decibel levels for a pool of this capacity? Um, or work or studies or, you know, information that you could pass on?
Uh, I can, I can do some research, I, I don't have that information, uh, you know, currently available.
And, and I would just, I, I'm sorry, I, I would just add to that, Hing- Hingham has a noise bylaw. Uh, that protects all residents, and so whatever operation, however it's conducted, it will need uh, to abide by, by the noise bylaw. Bill, do you have a point on that? Because I know, um, yeah, go ahead, Bill.
I, I do have one point, you know, a lot of the concerns uh, being raised tonight, and you know, Chris, you've made some great points, Kelly, you made a great point. Uh, Jim McGuire as well, um, when the planning board permits this project, i- i- it engages in something called site plan review. It addresses spill over parking into a budding streets, it addresses um, replacement of vegetation. In fact, sometimes it requires um, an applicant to submit a landscaping plan. Uh, it requires uh, li- landscaping buffer replacements, which would um. I, uh, would sometimes dull sound from, from, from a project, so a lot of the concerns being raised tonight. Uh, will be addressed during the permitting process, and a project of this size and scope will have to go through the special permitting process. It will go to zoning, would also go to planning for parking permit and site plan review. So these are all good concerns being raised, I think it's good for the applicant to, to hear these concerns. But the planning board is required to go through these, um, address these issues as it goes through with permitting to projects. Just wanna let everybody know that, uh, these are concerns would definitely be addressed, um, and they'll be addressed in, in pretty good detail as well.
What's the capacity of the pool? I guess I haven't heard that number.
The actual um. It's basically a, a strict, a straight um. Mathematical formula based upon the square footage of the surface area of the water. And let me just pull that up real quick, so I have it. So the maximum capacity simply based upon uh, the Department of Public Health formula. Is uh, two hundred men, two hundred and eight men, two hundred and eight women, and that's strictly. Uh, calculation based on square footage of the surface area of the water and the depth. So there's a certain factor.
Is that all three pools, Chris?
Well, there are only two pools.
Okay, does that account for both, both of the pools?
Yes, that's, that includes the family pool and the lap pool.
And what's the capacity today of the existing pool?
There is no existing pool today.
Well, the one that was open two years ago.
That's a good question, I don't. I, I, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. That, that's certainly, that's certainly a number, if it's a mathematical calculation, we could find out uh, based, based on that and, and get that, get that information to you.
Okay, thanks, and then, yeah, just my second question on the, and how a decision might be made on, if it were to become a three hundred and sixty-five day pool.
So I, I think that decision would involve at the onset, the country club. Um, to the extent that there are funds required to improve it, to buy the bubble, things like that. It uh, would go before the select board and ultimately uh, most likely town meeting as well. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Monahan.
Thanks, i- 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 this is if, if it does go to three hundred and sixty-five days and the fans that support the bubble. They don't show up in, obviously, the plans because it's not planned for a bubble yet, but where would those fans go? Would they be on the Delpratt side of the world, or could you put them on the country club side of the world where the, the noise factor would be lessened for us?
So I, be- before anyone tries to respond, that really is not something before us, there is no funding for that right now. Um, and quite frankly, I suspect if we, if you go that route, you may, may need to do some study. As to where the optimal place would be to put, to uh, place those fans. Uh, and as Bill pointed out, that is an entire project that would need to be vetted and approved by the planning board as well. So um, I think the thought process there is, is spot on. But it's not something that I think is appropriately addressed at this stage before this group.
Okay.
I see uh, Stephanie Jones.
Yes, thank you, um, just as a follow-up to Jimmy Moynihan's question. Our understanding from the walkthrough is that it is actually part of this plan and that they're putting down a pad. That will support the fans, um, and that's gonna be done at the beginning of the project, just like the outline for the bubble. Will be done at the beginning of the project, and right now, my understanding is that pad is on the Delpratt side right next to the pool. Maybe Chris or um, Kevin, am I, am I accurate about that?
That is correct, so we, we do have to plan now for where it would go in the future. And so we are that, and you are correct, that is where I pointed it out during that walkthrough. So it's the south east side of the pool deck.
And is it, is there a reason? Is there a reason it's there, or would it be easy enough to move it somewhere else without changing the costs?
Well, the other, that's actually the second place that we were looking at putting it, the other uh, location was on the north side of the pool deck. Which would actually require taking more trees down, and we didn't really think that that would be an appropriate solution. So we chose this spot because it's an open area already, it's directly adjacent to the parking areas. So for maintenance is easy, uh, for installation of the equipment in the future, it would be easy, easier, I should say. You know, putting it on the opposite side of the facility would be very difficult for a number of reasons. Um, particularly just for uh, access and things like that. Because between the equipment and the bubble, there has to be a fairly um, open area. So we do, you would, we would either need to put it in the middle of the parking lot or in kind of the open clearing that is currently there right now. So we felt that that was the best, best possible spot, given the, the uh, site parameters that we're having to deal with.
But.
So to answer Jimmy's question.
But, oh, sorry, if I, if I can just follow up on, on that, so did you take into account the impact on the neighbors with that location? Because that, I think, that's the question that was asked, and Stephanie, I appreciate you asking me, because I didn't realize that that really was built, built in here. So um, to what extent would the impact on the neighbors consider?
Uh, we, we did consider that, and that's also why we reached out to get the acoustic information that we did. Um, and, and I was frankly pleasantly surprised at, at the information that we received. You know, with the, with the, you know, forty-two decibels at two hundred and ten feet, um, that, that's incredibly minimal. Is even just general background noise in a quiet office is, is greater than that amount of noise. So um, it was something we considered, we're obviously still in the process. And, you know, we can consider some other mitigating issues as well, so.
Right, and so this is exactly the kind of question that, that Bill pointed out before, that the planning boards and the zoning boards look at. Uh, quite frankly, with, with homes where they put in air conditioning condensers outside their homes, i- if it, if it causes noise. Sometimes there's a shielding requirement, uh, to make sure that doesn't impact, impact neighbors. So uh, that, that is a level of detail, um, I guess it is part of what you, what you, what you've costed in. But approval for that type of work will not be presented at this stage. Um, but Stephanie, thank you for, thank you for raising that. I see no one else. So um, at this point, we have before us, um, this is Article Q. I am prepared to accept the motion on Article Q.
I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article Q.
Second.
We do a roll call though, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I am also an I, so at this stage, Article Q will now move to the next stage. Article N is now before us for the, for the community, Community Preservation Committee. Um, and Larry, I believe you are here, Larry Linder. Are you still here?
I'm here.
Um, so please present for us the proposed Warren article.
Michelle, can you put it up? I had sent it to you earlier today.
Uh, I think all the board members have a copy, but I can certainly put it up, if you give me one minute.
Sure. I can start talking as you're looking.
Yep, please.
So it's, it's a four-part article, um, the CPC is recommending twenty thousand dollars for CPC administration. Eighty-nine thousand two hundred uh, fifteen dollars for reconstruction of the hockey court on Cronin Field. A hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred forty dollars to create two new three-bedroom, one and a half-bath residences. By South Shore Habitat for Humanity at three oh two and three oh four Whiting Street. And five hundred fifty thousand to be used by the Country Club Management Committee for construction of the new pool, of a new pool complex. At the South Shore Country Club.
And I will say, Larry, that you were previously before the select board and made uh, a very good presentation. As to uh, justifying each of those four items.
Thank you.
Liz, any, any questions?
I don't have any questions about those four projects, thank you.
Bill?
Uh, no, no, no questions, um, specific to Larry, but I'd like to enter into some discussion if we could.
I'm sorry, I'm, I missed that, Bill, could you?
Uh, no questions for Larry, no, but thank you, Larry.
Um, are there any members of the public with questions on Article N? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion on Article N.
Did you wanna have discussion, Bill?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, so.
Is this, Bill, is this on Article N, or is it something?
It's on Article N, yes, on Article.
Okay.
So, so I, I guess, Joe, I think you mentioned at, at our last meeting, and I think John Coffin weighed in. The board does have some options to consider with respect to the CPC recommendations, and again, I, I'm just, I'm just inquiring what those options are. Um, I do appreciate the, the, the work done by the board, very much appreciate your leadership, Larry. I've looked at the act, um, and it's, it's unclear to me what the options are, what the select board options are, with the recommendations from the committee. Um.
So I, I, I believe that um, the, w- once the uh, CPC has voted its proposal. The select board and ultimately town meeting can reduce the amounts that have been proposed, but cannot increase. Um, and there are, to my knowledge, no other options.
It, what, what about, what about, what about the decision to pay into the debt service? Wasn't there an option there?
So with respect to the, so that is not part of the Warren article, uh, with respect to Article N, the debt service is not there. And um, even if we were to decide to go in a different direction there. We could not apply those funds, CPC funds, to any project in a different manner. Then had been voted upon by CPC, except if we wanted to reduce the amount that was voted by CPC.
So I guess we, would be, and so we would just be making a recommendation to reduce the amount paid into the debt service. Above the required amount, and then town meeting would ultimately decide that? Or could we actually reduce the amount paid into the debt service above what they were required to pay?
So.
Understand what I'm asking?
See, I, yes, um, it's a little confusing because you're using both the reduced and above in this, in the same sentence.
Because they're required to pay, they're required to pay a certain minimum into the debt service, and they, and they fulfilled their requirement, and they paid above that.
Correct, so the amount above that, again, is not part of the Warren article. Except to the extent that the payment above was required to meet certain ten percent thresholds associated with different categories of CPC. Uh, but respecting those ten percent uh, minimum requirements, we cannot, w- we can vote not to. Uh, pay down the debt, put it differently, since it's not part of the Warren article, it's not something we would be voting on at, at this time. Uh, but even if we took those funds and said, we're not gonna use them to pay down the debt. Uh, we could not amend a CPC vote to apply those funds in a different way. That, that is, that's the constraint of the state statute, uh, and.
That is from the act?
Correct, so that, that is a constraint of the state statute, uh, and in fact, it, you know, the statute really empowers the CPC. To do the evaluation, to consider the appropriate use of, of funds that were seg- collected and segregated for CPC use. Uh, and they are the entity that has to make that decision.
Okay, all right, I just, well, obviously, I don't wanna reduce anything that was, and, and, and I say this, Larry, and I, and I do appreciate your explanation of the art. Of all the articles, and I, and I appreciate the committed due diligence, the one vote I was a little concerned about was the pool, just because I know it was a close vote. And as you said, it was five to four, and there's some strong feelings on the, on the issue, um, in the minority. And I think Judy, Judy Snead asked us to look at that as well, so that's why I was inquiring about it, so um, okay, I'm comfortable with it, thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, Liz, did I cut you off? Did you have any, any questions?
No, that was, I, I mean, I had similar questions to Bill go, going into this, what, what our options were, but that was how you explained it. Was my understanding that um, right now, we're not voting on the, the debt service, but we can't increase any of the projects. So it's not as if we could take money from the debt service and apply it to other projects.
Correct, that's right. Um, Tom, let me know if you think I've misstated anything, but I think I've got it right.
Oh, you got it right, Joe.
Thank you. Any other questions, uh, any questions for members of the public? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion on Article N.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article N.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I. Uh, the next item on our agenda, um, just, if I can get my agenda back here, um, here we go. Um, was uh, going to be the uh, HMLP uh, station site. Uh, but again, uh, that has been deferred and is being deferred to a future uh, select board meeting. We now move on to Article T, the Fire Department Large Capital Needs, and I believe Chief Murphy is with us.
Yes, hi, um, good evening.
And I think you've got deputies with you as well.
I do, I have uh, both Deputy Lechance and Deputy Levinson, uh, that are joining me tonight. Um, I don't know if, uh, Michelle, do you wanna start out with presenting the actual wording from the language? And then I can go in and explain the um, the different needs that we're requesting.
Let me pull that up.
There's only thirty five articles.
Well, I know you guys were just changing the language on it. I would just make sure that we get everything correct. So.
Okay, here we go. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so combined within this article, or I'm sorry, within this warrant is a few different categories, in a sense. The first one is to replace a fire engine. We are currently requesting to replace a fire engine that was purchased in 2002. Now typically, we have been using sixteen years as a replacement period for the engines. This one, in this case, is actually extended beyond that, and we're getting to about the twenty year period. The, you know, one of the reasons that we're requesting to replace this, even though the truck, the way we kind of do it, it's kind of weird. We have to explain this to new members of capital is that we're actually replacing a reserve engine. And then a engine that's currently a primary engine becomes the new reserve engine. So that's what we're doing. So the new engine itself that would become the reserve was purchased in 2016. So that engine is in very good condition, but the 2002 engine is twenty years old now. And we are finding a lot more difficulty getting parts for it, having someone work on it, whatever the case. We've also been mentioned, or it's been pointed out to us that the truck is starting to get a little bit of rot on the bottom of it, which is always a concern because a lot of these fire trucks are aluminum and steel, and the two metals don't work together. So that's kind of the concern is that, you know, even though the primary truck is still in good condition, the reserve truck is really hitting its end of life period. So we're requesting it $790,000 for that portion of it. That is assuming about a $10,000 trade in value. We usually can't actually get estimates on a trade in this early in the process because we don't know what's going to happen when we actually get delivery of the truck. I can mention to you that we've already been talking with different vendors, and because of all of the supply issues and everything else, we're looking at probably a minimum of eighteen months on a delivery time, twelve to eighteen months, even if we put the order in now. That's just the typical bill time and everything else, whereas it normally would be about six to nine months. So it's an extended amount. So that's the first article. Not first article, but the first portion of this warrant. The second portion of it revolves around a lot of work at Station One. So to give you a little bit of a history on it, I believe all three of you have been through the station and have seen, you know, some of the issues that we're dealing with. One of the things that unfortunately I don't know is publicly known that much was the renovation project in 2007, 2008 included a lot of work, but it was not a entire rebuild of the building. And so specifically, the biggest thing that, you know, one of the articles that were or categories that we're asking for is the roof. And so if you look at the station, there's actually three separate ages of the different roofs that are on there, the main portion of the building that, you know, the original station that was built in 1941, they did not replace that. So we have a slate roof that supposedly typically have a seventy five to a hundred year lifespan that's already at its eighty year point. And we do get rain depending upon especially how it blows with the wind and everything else, or snow, or whatever the case. And that's caused some damage on the third floor, which is the living quarters with both wall damage and ceiling damage. So that's the first reason that we need to have some work done on the roof was because it was never done as part of the original project. The second portion of the roof that we're having problems with as well is part of the renovation, the way they tied the new building into the existing building wasn't frankly done properly. And the materials that they used has failed, and specifically the slates, the clips that hold the slates on are kind of failing. We've looked, unfortunately, that company that made those clips went bankrupt. So there's really not a lot of recourse to kind of go back and say, hey, this was supposed to have a longer lifespan. What happened? There's a reason that they went bankrupt. They had a bad product, you know. So that's the second portion of the roof work at Station One. There's also some other needs that never really got addressed, which, you know, personally, I wish had been done with that 2008 project. Specifically, some of the exterior work that the trim on the building was not replaced. So a lot of it is original wood trim. A lot of the fascia, everything else was not replaced. So that needs to be replaced now as well. And we would like to kind of modify it a little bit. If you look at the front door, it's rotting because of the fact that there's no cover over it. There's no like proper entrance or anything else. So no matter what we do to it, even if we put a brand new door in, which happened as part of the project, it just gets rotted out because the water just runs down the side of the building and just kind of enters into it. So that's another portion. So between the two of those, we're requesting 570,000, 500 for the roof, and then 70,000 for the replacement of the portico, the trim. That's kind of the way we're lumping the categories together. The next portion of the warrant request involves Station Three. And Station Three Constitution and South Hangham, that roof is original as well, which, you know, all three stations were built in 1941. So that is a slate roof. And with the pitch on that roof, we're having more significant leaking issues up there. Again, same issue. It's an original roof. It's, you know, over eighty years old. It doesn't actually have any like, you know, tar paper underneath it, or whatever it has is kind of worn out. It's the roof is hit its end of life. And, you know, as much as we would love to be able to, you know, hope that we get a new station to replace that one, we're realistic in the fact that that's going to take a number of years based on how long we've been working on the Station Two project. And we know that, you know, we have to, we have to address it sooner rather than later. We also have water damage that has come into the walls there, including in the sleeping areas where the firefighters are sleeping, and we don't want to go through the same issues that we had down at Station Two with the mold repair and all that other stuff. So we want to try to address this before it gets any worse. The final issue that we have, and I really wish we didn't have this, but it's a, you know, a significant issue for us is that one area of the Station One renovations that frankly was a complete disaster was the HVAC system. I don't know who we were not, the three of us, we're not really involved that much in the planning phase of it, and every contractor HVAC company that we've ever had come and look at it or work on that system shakes their head and said whoever designed this should not have been working in HVAC. It's a combination of a couple of different systems that it looks like they thought that we can save money by doing this and combining what, you know, one system versus another. And ultimately, it completely failed. And we are constantly having issues with it. It's also pretty pathetic that we have a fire station where the crews are there 24/7, and we're either in heat mode or AC mode. We can't do both. So those cold days that, you know, you get a hot day during the summertime, but it's a little cooler at night. If we're in AC mode, we're in AC mode. We can't do anything. We all, if you come into our admin offices, we all have little space heaters underneath our desks in a station that's ten years old, because the heating system is just, it's it's inefficient. It just does not work. We've already spent, Deputy Levinson can probably provide more information on this, but we've already had to replace the a couple of the motors in the major units. We've already had to replace the controller for the whole system. It's a computer operated system. It is just, it's a, to like I said, to put it frankly, it's just been a disaster for us. And, you know, especially, I think it'd be different if it was just an admin building and people were only there during the daytime or anything else. But considering this is a building where our staff are living in this building for 24 hours a day, all periods of weather, storms, whatever the case, you know, we need something that's going to, you know, adequately service that building. So. Deputy Levinson, anything that that anything else that you want to add? Dave has been involved in the maintenance of our buildings for many years now and has a very good knowledge and of what we need and everything else. So, Dave.
Yeah, I know. It's pretty extensive. I mean, we're we're managing it, but we still have units that don't work due to frozen valves. There's a twin pump system that's supposed to alternate pumps back and forth. We've been running on one pump 24/7 for the last coming up on two years anyways. The other pump's been broken, and we haven't been able to get it fixed. It's pretty much situated in a pretty bad spot over the boiler, and it's tough to get at. So it involves a lot of work. We're just kind of hoping that the pump we're running on now continues to run because when it fails, we'll have nothing, no heat or AC. And being a hydronic system, and we have a chiller, and when we're in AC mode, it's undersized, and we get a lot of condensation buildup inside the building because the pipe insulation gets saturated and starts to drip. Most of the time, it's in a hallway. Sometimes it's in somebody's office or a bunk room or whatnot. And some of it's above the ceiling where we can't see it. We started having to remove some of the drywall ceiling to access some of the valves, and we are finding mold. It's in between the double layer of five eights sheet rock at the moment. It's in pretty tough shape, and there's not a lot of good fixes to it, but we'll have to figure out something.
Deputy, any any other comments on the roofs or the portico or anything else?
Roof, yeah, so. For Station One, it probably all should be removed, the old and the new, and redone to look the same, or as historical, it suggested they are amenable to something other than slate. We just need to show them samples. They even suggested a standing seam metal over the apparatus bay portion and a slate looking product over the the occupied part of the building. It needs to have insulation added to it and that water barrier, the second layer protection, the flat roofs have to be redone, especially under the chiller. And then the tie in from the old to the new has failed. And on certain days, you can you can see the water coming in at the top of the stairway. The flat roof under the chiller is especially in tough shape because of the way it was done. The chiller will have to be removed to redo that section of roof. Which is why the project probably all needs to be encompassed into one. So that when they're doing the high back work and the chiller comes off to be replaced with a new one, they can do the roof prior to having the new one installed. So we're not doing it twice. The Station Three roof, it's in tough shape, especially in the valleys. And in this time of year with the heavy snow, and then it freezes, and we get ice dams due to lack of insulation. That's when it starts leaking into the bunk room and the kitchen areas. It's dripped enough in through the attic over the apparatus floor that it's punctured a hole through the roof. They were trying to collect it in a bucket, and the bucket got heavy and due to rot of the wire mesh that was used in the old plaster, it just let go and came through the ceiling. The coupler over Station Three is also missing slate off its little roof. The coupler is over both stations, Station Two and Three are in tough shape. Two's isn't as bad as Station Three's. The gutters, the exterior trim is the same as Station Two. There isn't much of it, but what is there can't hold paint. It's rotting on the ends, the window frames. Older wood that's lost its primer is losing its paint and rotting again around the edges of it. There's a fair amount of work. If you're going to do a renovation project, you kind of got to really attack it, especially on the exterior envelope, because if that fails, everything you do on the inside is just going to get ruined. And that's what's happened at Station One. It was leaking enough that the walls are falling apart in the second floor. Is not much point in trying to fix it. We could patch it, but then any good ice dam and it'll all come in again, and all that work will fall off.
It's it's one of those that, you know, like I mentioned earlier, we went through this with Station Two on the flat roof down there. And for years, we were putting Band-Aids on the problem, and then it eventually got to the point where we said, this is crazy. We have to do something beyond this. And we did take care of that. But, you know, like I said, I can't speak to the building committee on Station One headquarters on their choice on not replacing the roof. I was not part of those conversations, but, you know, I wish they had done it then, because we're, you know, we're dealing with these problems now. And, you know, I look at it, and I'm sure that a lot of other people are going to say the same thing, that they're going to question, especially with the HVAC system that was replaced. They're going to question, well, who was kind of paying attention to the project and oversaw this. But, you know, as I said, the roof wasn't part of it, you know, that it was the original portion was 1941. As you look at the building, there's the an addition that got added in the late eighties. That roof is actually okay, but as the deputy said, the way we've got to tie them all in and everything else has to be done at the same time. And we, you know, it just makes sense that, you know, we're, I don't see. I hope that we get the longevity out of the current, you know, headquarters that we got out of it already. But at a minimum, when we are designing the replacement for the public safety building, we're looking at a 50 year building, you know. So this is something that the work was done, you know, 2008, 2009. But it's not going to give us the longevity that we need without putting some money into it now. So.
Got it. Did Deputy Lechance, was there anything that you wanted to add?
No, Deputy Levinson really summed it up. I mean, we need, we have some serious work that needs to get done in that building. It's unfortunate, but, you know, like the chief said, our crews are there 24/7. They have leaks in the bedrooms. They have, you know, sheet rock falling off the walls. So we really need to get this done for them.
And Tom, if I can ask you, Chief Murphy raised an interesting point. He didn't know who was overseeing the project back then. Who will be overseeing this work now so that we make sure it's done properly?
So it would be JR Fry is our town engineer. Unless we decide frankly that we need an OPM on this, which we may. But I'm thinking for now JR is the is the short straw. JR, any comments on that?
So he's 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 not, we're not letting him comment. So I'm going to start with Liz. Do you have any questions on this?
Thank you for explaining all of that. I know you showed me a lot of that as well, and and I understand the need and the urgency. In terms of, you know, selecting the right companies going forward with this, I guess maybe this is a question for you, Tom. Would it go through kind of our normal procurement procedures now with Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. And so I understand this is its own article. Obviously, it's bigger than what's coming through capital outlay. So would this funding come out of fund balance or?
Yeah, potentially potentially fund balance. Liz, I think part of the analysis that we need to do is identify how how and on what projects and the timing of use of fund balance. We need to evaluate that over the course of the next week or three. I would say that that will include our plan for use on fund balance on the projects that are likely to come before the town at a special town meeting in the fall, foster in the public safety facility. So I know that there had been a long time discussion about use of our excess fund balance to offset the tax impact of those two very large projects. So we need to take that into account when we figure out how to how to fund some of these smaller projects. The other option we have is to is to borrow them, roll them into our annual bands and and do it that way.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Yep. Bill Ramsey.
Yeah, what's the total, Chief, what's the total ask of this article?
Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but doing my math on it, it was 2.2 million 30,000. So 2.23000, correct?
Double check right now.
So we're adding 790, 570, 720, and 150.
Correct.
Yes. Great. My question was same with Liz is about financing. How are we going to, are we going to do fund balance or borrowing? So, okay. You know, the needs there.
Yeah.
Chief and Deputy Levinson, absolutely. I, you know, I've been in the Um, chief and deputy Levinson, absolutely. I, you know, I've been in the buildings. I've seen it. Um, firefighters have shown it to me. Um, I, I, I don't know why that roof wasn't replaced in two thousand and eight. Baffles my mind, um, but it, we're, we're dealing with it now. I've seen the, I've seen the mold. I've seen the water stains, but we need to fix it. You know, the, they, they, the firefighters live there. They work there. It's, it's unacceptable. So fully support it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and, uh, Chief Murphy, you, you are right. Liz, Bill and I have each been through the buildings. We've each seen it. Um, and, uh, we believe that action needs to be taken. So, so thank you. Are there, I don't see them, but are there any members of the public with questions on this article? Uh, seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
Make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article T.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
I.
Bill.
I.
And Joe, T. We have now concluded the articles. We move to the next item, which also involves Chief Murphy, a request concerning capital repurpose, uh, for the fire department. Chief Murphy, what is being proposed here?
So in FY twenty-one, um, capital approved us for twenty thousand dollars. To actually do some work on the HVAC system at Station One Headquarters. Specifically, it was to replace some of the pipe wrap, um, that, you know, as Deputy Levinson alluded. Because of the way that, you know, the pipes are undersized, they condensate a lot and then we're getting, um, mold on the pipe wrap. Um, and because we've had some leakage of the pipes and everything else. So, um, we requested and were granted the twenty thousand dollars in FY twenty-one to replace this. Um, most of the pipe wrap is actually in the boiler room, um, or down in the basement. It is not in the residential areas. Um, although frankly, there is some in some of the offices, specifically, you know, the admin type of offices. Um, but, you know, knowing that we were coming forward with this warrant article. Um, we have waited to replace that, um, pipe wrap because it just would be kind of throwing money away. If it's going to, you know, have work done on it afterwards, then it doesn't really make any sense. So one of the things that we want to do with this is actually two separate purposes. First is to add two windows to offices at fire headquarters, one of which is Deputy Levinson's office. Um, that was originally built as a small conference room, um, slash could be an office with a two thousand and eight renovation. But it didn't actually get used at that purpose at first until we added the second deputy. So he does not have an off, a window in his office. The second thing that we have is there's another room at headquarters that was built as a backup dispatch center. Um, when the, and this is, um, built and designed before the Shrek actually opened. Um, so when the police used to dispatch, or not the police, the civilians used to dispatch at the police station. If they needed to, they could come to our station and dispatch from there. Um, that is no longer a viable option with the Shrek. Now they actually go to Holbrook to another regional dispatch center. Um, so we don't use this room as a dispatch, um, or a anything for that matter, to be honest. Uh, now with the needs of Town Hall and Office Space, our Fire Prevention Office used to be located at the Building Department. We have since moved him, um, Lieutenant Tenapoli, our Fire Marshal, over to Station One. And had to set up a temporary office for him in our conference room. Which also means that we lost our conference room unless we kick him out of it to use it or anything else. So we want to use the money, um, that is left over to add the two windows to both that office. Uh, that I'm talking, they, the proposed new office and to Deputy Levinson's office. Uh, and kind of do a little bit of redesign work, um, in those two, so.
Uh, so with respect to the redesign, um, is. Uh, the proposal I understand is to hire the contractor to modify the space. Uh, is, is who's going to design that space? So when the contractor works, he's actually doing something that meets with everyone's approval.
So we actually just started this process and I apologize for this. We started this process on, you know, looking at this just within the last few weeks. We've had one contractor that has come in. We have not actually received the proposed plans. But a lot of the, when I say redesign, it's more about changing the current counter that's in there. And turning it into a more effective office. It's not actually, it's not as elaborate as the work that went on up in the, um, the select board's office. Or, you know, Tom and Michelle's office and actually putting up partition walls. It's more about removing some current shelving that is built in there and then building some other new custom shelving for the new office.
So are you, are you confident that both of these items can be accomplished within the fifteen thousand five hundred dollar budget?
We, we believe we are, um, and, um, we, we know what the windows are going to cost. We just need to know the contractor amount, but, um, I'm going to let Deputy Levinson speak on this because he is a contractor as well, so.
Uh, yeah, uh, we should be okay. We've priced out the windows. They're the exact match to what's already in the building. Uh, they are a good window and it will all look the same. That's the most amount of work in anything even remotely structural, cutting through the, uh, exterior walls to have those installed. The rest is just some finished trim work and painting and removing the carpet off the floor. Uh, fairly simple work. It's not too involved. And then, uh, the addition of maybe one built-in cabinet to house our radios that we do have to keep in that EOC room. Um, beyond that, you, you're looking at a hundred and twenty square foot office and, uh. And a hundred and sixty-two square foot office. They're not very big. Uh, so just window, the flooring and some paint. It's, we should be okay.
Okay, so if, if you get close to the ceiling, Liz, Bill and I will come in and assist in the painting. But we, yeah, we keep the budget.
We, we did do that at Station Two during that mold renovation. Uh, there were, the firefighters wanted to be involved and we were able to take care of the painting. And we do have, uh, some in-house people that have redone some of our flooring in the rooms and at. The, uh, common room at Station Three. So we can, there, there's a way to work around it. It's just the windows are the bigger part, especially, we have to cut through a, uh, brick wall.
Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Bill.
No questions.
Any member of the public with questions?
Just want to point out, Joe, that the deputy actually has a painted window scene on his wall. It's a little sad, really.
Okay, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to approve the request of the Fire Department to repurpose fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. From FY twenty-one capital for minor renovations to the Fire Department Headquarters.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
I.
Bill.
I.
And Joe, I approved. Next item on the agenda is to schedule a, um, public hearing regarding a request for the approval of private bonds. For the Linden Ponds Inc. project in accordance with Section one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code. Uh, I'm going to cut to the chase on this. Um, this is a borrowing that under the Internal Revenue Service. Needs to be, uh, noticed for a public hearing and then ultimately approved by the Town of Hingham. It is not any, a debt of the Town of Hingham. It is a, a debt that benefits the Town of Hingham. In order to qualify for the, uh, tax status, it needs to be reviewed by a public body. And that is the purpose of, uh, the hearing and then ultimately a vote. Uh, are there any questions on that, Liz?
No questions. Um, I spoke with Tom and Art about it. Thank you.
Bill.
No questions. I've spoke with Art and, and at length about it and I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
And I too have spoken at length with Art. Art, um, anything you need to add?
Nothing to add, Joe. I think you tried to do a great summer.
Great, so I will accept a motion.
Make a motion to schedule a remote public hearing under the provisions of Section. One forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended. On Wednesday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, commencing at seven PM. Regarding a request for approval of private bonds under said Section one forty-seven F. By Linden Ponds Incorporated and to authorize a town administrator. Or the town administrator designate to conduct said public hearing and provide a transcript of said public hearing to the select board.
Second.
Be, uh, so it's been moved in second. I just want to confirm with Art that the date is correct. It's the sixteenth and not the fourteenth.
Uh, the date, based on our ability to, uh, get a posting. Placed with the Patriot Ledger is actually the fourteenth, so the. The motion, the motion as, as offered is, is no longer current.
So, so am I correct that the date should have been February fourteenth?
For the hearing, correct, yes.
Okay, not the six.
So I would amend the motion then, so it's to Monday, February fourteenth. Twenty-second to commence, uh, second, yeah, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two commencing at seven PM. Art, is that correct?
This is, yes.
Okay.
So Liz, is there a second on the amended motion?
Second on the amended motion.
Even though it's Valentine's Day, we're willing to do that here. Um, any, uh, public comments? Seeing none. Um, we do a roll call vote. Liz.
I.
Bill.
I.
And Joe, I, we are approved. We move to public comments on items not on the agenda. Are there any such public comments? Seeing none, we move to Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Um, Tom.
Not tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Uh, Michelle.
Nothing, thank you.
Art.
Uh, nothing further to add. Thank you.
Great, and, um. Liz.
Uh, nothing to add. Thank you.
Bill.
I just very briefly, I know it's late, but tomorrow, uh, the Winter Olympics start. We do have, uh, Hingham resident Matty Benares is on the, um, men's hockey team. And also, uh, Drew Camesso, he's not from Hingham, but he, he had, his family is from Hingham. Uh, his parents grew up in town. Um, he is a goaltender on the men's hockey team. So we have two, um, individuals with ties to the town, um, on the hockey team tomorrow and certainly be cheering for them and wish them luck in the Olympic Games.
Great, um, anything else, Bill? I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's it.
Uh, so I have, uh, one item to report. Uh, JR has been very active in getting, um. Uh, applying for grants and, uh, I will be writing to the, uh, Executive Office of. Energy and Environmental Affairs, writing on behalf of the Select Board to express our support. For, uh, a coastal infrastructure improvement project at Barnes Wharf, getting funds for that. And also to express the, uh, the support of this body for the Hingham Town Pier Repair and Resiliency Improvement Project. Um, so, uh, I intend to be communicating on behalf of the board our support and hopefully, uh. We will, uh, succeed and JR will succeed in getting, uh, the funds for that. Uh, and that's all I.
Select from Fisher.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Yep, um, and I believe, uh, Mr. Mayo will be joining me in, uh, in expressing that support. And JR, we really do appreciate your work here. Thank you. I'm prepared at ten twenty-four to accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
I.
Bill.
I.
Joe, I.